I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic over which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And with that, Mr. Petches, will you have the roll call?
Yes, certainly. Commissioner Eggleston.
Here.
Commissioner Blackwell.
Here.
Commissioner Ruland.
Here.
Vice Chair Brown.
Here.
Commissioner Crandall.
Here.
Commissioner Wu.
Here.
Commissioner Smith.
Here.
Okay, with that, we have some special orders of business tonight, which is the selection of the Planning Commission Chair, Vice Chair, and Chair Pro Tem. And with that, will entertain any suggestions?
I would like to nominate our most senior member, Commissioner Brown. Our most senior Planning Commission Commissioner, pardon me. But he's been Chair of the Coastal Advisory Committee. He has his nickname of Encyclopedia Brown for his detailed knowledge of all of the vast amount of material that we get put in front of us, and I think he'd make a very fine chair.
All in favor?
Aye.
In turn, the Vice Chair.
I would move for Jim Ruland to move up from Chair Pro Tem to Vice Chair for the next term.
And I'd be proud to second that. For that second, is there a motion? All in favor?
Aye.
And for Pro Chair, Pro Tem? Any other nominations? Yes, okay. Thank you. For Chair Pro Tem?
It would be a pleasure.
I would be happy to second that.
Any other nominees? Do I have a motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Now, selection of Design Review Subcommittee members, a very, I think, key group. And I would like to nominate kind of a slate of Bart Crandall, Jim Ruland, and our senior Commissioner in many ways, Mr. Eggleston. And as an alternate, maybe our architect, Mr. Wu. Are there any other? Is there a second, I guess, for that?
Well, to the risk of seconding something that I'm nominated for, there's just, that's a large slate. I will second it, so.
Okay. Any other nominees? Okay. Is there a motion? All in favor?
Aye.
And with that, we come to the selection of Coastal Advisory Committee member, Planning Commission member. And Mr. Blackwell, would you be interested in serving on the?
I would.
And if that's a motion, I'll second.
Well, is there any other nominees? Is there a second then to that?
I will second.
Okay. Is there a motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Okay, and now briefly, we'll have the new members, I guess, briefly introduce themselves to the audience. We'll start from right to left and see if you can work your microphone there.
Yes, hello, my name is Michael Blackwell. I am honored to be on this commission. I'm very much looking forward to contributing to the important work that the commission does for our community. And I'm deeply, deeply honored to be among such dedicated, knowledgeable, and dynamic people on this commission. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Zain Wu. I'm a certified planner and licensed architect. I'm thrilled to have this opportunity to serve the community for the general, for the public interest after dozens of years in private sector planning.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
And with that, I guess we'll have a city email review, I believe is on the agenda.
Good evening, Commissioners. Brian Brower, IT Manager for the City of St. Clemente. And what I'm here to present tonight is essentially, we are beginning the practice of creating city email accounts for all commission and committee members in the city. In the past, we've only done this for the council. And we're beginning to do this to facilitate communication and to also kind of give you guys the appropriate tools to execute the duties that you've signed on for. And with that, I want to take a few minutes and walk you through the steps to actually log into your email accounts. These accounts will take effect starting tomorrow at noon. For those of you who are familiar with how we've done it in the past, city staff has emailed the Commissioners at email accounts that are generated personally. And so this allows you guys to have a separation of your city business and your personal business. Throughout the process, myself and my team will make ourselves available to make sure this is a smooth transition. If you need help logging in, setting up your password for this first time, we're there to help you. And the handout that I've given you has the instructions step by step that we're also going to go through here in a second. And also, my phone number is there, so please don't hesitate to give me a call if you need any assistance with the process. So as I mentioned, starting tomorrow at noon, you'll be able to log into this website. The web address is on the handout, but it's outlook.office365.com. You'll see a page that looks just like this, and you can enter your email address. Everybody's email address is going to be their last name, followed by their first initial, @st-clemente.org. So if we use a sample address of John Smith, the address is smithj@st-clemente.org. There is a first-time password listed on the sheet. I won't speak that into the microphone, but at that, at this point, you enter the password. It always takes longer when you're doing it in front of a crowd. Standby. Are there any questions while we're waiting for the? Yes, Michael. You're the only Smith M. at the city currently, so if we get another Smith M., they're going to be Smith M. 1, but you get to be Smith M. We're not that big of an organization. So the first time you log in, you're going to get this prompt to update your password. So a second time, you'll enter that initial password that I put into the instructions. And then create a new password. This password has to meet complexity requirements. It has to have some upper and lowercase letters and numbers and characters. It has to be at least eight characters long, and it can't include, I think, any more than three consecutive letters of your name. So you have to get tricky here. And enter it a second time here to confirm it. Click Submit. It will then bounce you back out to the login screen where you just were. You enter your new password. Sign in. First time you log in, click on Mail. It'll ask you to select a time zone. So we select the Pacific time zone. Click on Save. And that's all there is to it. So should be fairly simple. The exact, I've included image shots and everything you need to know in the instructions that I've distributed.
We basically go to the city website and from there work our way into the emails.
It's not the city website. It's outlook.office365.com. And that is step one of the instructions.
Okay, got it.
But again, my phone number's on there. Please don't hesitate to call. We want to make this as smooth as possible for you.
On my email account currently, I've kept a folder of all correspondence that I've gotten regarding city issues. Is there any way to get that folder onto this account? It's an Outlook.
Yes.
Product.
Yeah, we should be able to export it and put it in here. Or we could, we could set up Outlook to connect to this and then maintain that as an archive file. Why don't you contact me offline and I'll work with you and we'll figure out a way to achieve that goal. Anyone else? Okay. Let's get in touch tomorrow.
So starting afternoon tomorrow, then, the city planner, if he needs to communicate with us, will put something out on, into this system here. And then we'll, we just need to log in there and make sure we're up to speed on something.
We'll send out a test email, make sure everybody got it, and ask you to return.
Okay. Make sure we keep the links going. Thank you.
All city staff, internal city staff, yes.
Presently, I don't know, will they get the same thing we have? Because we have like a Planning Commission one where you?
There's a, yeah, there'll be a group to hit the entire commission, but yes, planning, other commissioners should be available through the system, although they can be hidden. Is there a question?
Another email.
If need be, yeah, we can make that happen. Any other questions, comments? There's not POP 3 access, but again, talk to me. We can, we can get access through Outlook.
We'll all work it out.
All right, great.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
Okay, with that, we'll move on to item five, Minutes. And is there, we need to approve, we need to move, approve the minutes from the study session of June 17th, 2015. Is there any motion to approve, or is there any comments that need to be made?
I so move if there are comments.
I have a comment.
Oh. Traffic comment?
Hold on. June 17th on page nine.
This is the study session on traffic calming, Michael?
No, actually, it starts.
We're, we're not to those minutes yet, Michael.
The, these minutes right here?
No, we're on, we're on the study session minutes right now, which is just the first page, which is on traffic calming.
Oh. Okay.
Okay, do we have a second on the study session minutes on traffic? We have a first?
Second.
Okay. All in favor of approving the minutes?
Aye.
Aye. And we, and we have two abstentions.
Two abstentions.
So it passes 5-2. 5-0-2, I guess I should say. And with that, we'll consider now minutes from the Planning Commission meeting of June 17th, 2015. And do we have a comment on that? Is it June 17th?
Yeah, I do. I believe that we're on page five. It says Chair Darden, who probably needs to refer to Jim Ruland.
That's correct. There's only amendment because you, she and I had to recuse, right? Good catch.
And if I can, I'd like to suggest something else that on page six, first stop paragraph, that I'd like to see in there somewhere the language of three stories on the alley. Well, we said two in front and three in the alley, didn't we?
Right.
Right. You mean, the first paragraph on page six, "Press the staff, research and return with an approach requiring building mass to transition from three to two along the alley that provides more design flexibility." Is that, is that area where you're concerned, Michael?
Was that, did we want to make it two stories? I'm not quite sure what, transition from three to two stories?
Well, the, it was total of three stories in the back, but the third story was going to be recessed. Is that correct?
I had to recuse, so I'm trusting on.
Right.
I guess what I'm looking for is that we talked about, you know, three stories on the, on the alley, so maximum. And I'd like to just see that in here somewhere, because I don't see that set, and I know we talked about it.
I think this is just about the transitioning from that three-story alley to the two-story setback? Uh, frontage. But maybe three stories in the alley to two along, well, actually, three stories to two along El Camino Real. Is that what it should say?
I remember relying on you that had to stay at the meeting since I had to recuse, so I'm.
I just, I don't see in there where we maximize three stories on the alley. And.
So it should probably say transition from three stories on the alley to two-story, to two on El Camino Real?
Well, it was two stories in El Camino Real. Three stories in the alleyway, then, that was, and I think what they're trying to say, it was, it was transitioned then with the setback to two stories right on the alley with a, with a setback of another story.
Yeah, but I'm still looking for a maximum of three stories on the alley.
It, it basically says three stories in the alley. It doesn't say you can have four or anything, so I'm fine with that. But the whole idea was originally, they had a 30-foot setback before you could go up again from that three stories.
Right.
And this was just asking for more flexibility to determine and make some variation in it. So it really was transitioning from the three stories to the two stories that would start 30 feet or 20 feet back, which is something we'll be talking about tonight.
Right.
Okay, so the proper wording would be, "Building mass to transition from three-story, from two stories along the alley to three stories with a setback beyond the alley." Would that be the appropriate way to term it?
Actually, I do think it's, even when they, Bart described it, yeah, I do think it's accurate the way that it is. We could clarify it if we wanted to, but, you know, I think, I think it's accurate. We're talking two or three stories, or we could call it a setback instead of a second story, but either way, it works.
It was two stories and then a setback to a third story.
Well, it's, it's the third story setback, the 30 or 25 feet that we're going to be talking about.
On the alley.
That's actually a third story setback, but it's a, it's a second story. I don't want to parse, parse it here. I just, I think the way, to me, it looks okay. I wouldn't mind clarifying it if you've got some text.
I just want to clarify that. Wayne and I went over this several times, and we said two stories in the front and three in the back. We went over that and over that, and it's, it doesn't really say that.
Do you have specific wording you want to include?
What do you want, what do you want to offer, Michael?
Well, that we agreed that there would be two stories along El Camino and a maximum of three along the alley. That would be a good add to this.
But that's not what this part of the conversation refers to.
I'm not sure we voted on that in this, when we were voting on this. I mean, we all agree that that is the case. But when we voted on this, it was specifically regarding those setbacks and the transitions rather than.
Michael, I just wondered if we could put on that, a transition from a maximum of three stories, a maximum of three stories along the alley, which would have a setback of, well, at that time, it was what, 30 feet? Or the third story?
Okay, let's.
That's what we had just, that's what we had talked about. That it was, it would be two in the front, two along El Camino Real, three stories in the alleyway with the, the third story that would be setback from, that would be, that would be setback. That's, I think that's what we agreed on.
That's what I remember we talked about.
Yeah.
Was it a vote, something like this, to build, building mass to transition from two stories along the alley to three, with a setback to three stories? I would invert the thing. Building mass transition from two stories on the alley to three stories with more design as effect with a setback?
Well, why don't we, since, since Michael, since you are the one who raised the issue, maybe you could give us some specific text that we can then decide to include or not in the, in the minutes?
Okay. Can I come back and think about that, or do I have to do that right now?
Well, we're trying to approve the minutes, so we're at a standstill until we get the language correct.
How about a transition from three stories maximum on the alley?
That provides more design flexibility?
Are you specific?
I'm not sure where the transition from three stories to two.
Because I'm not clear what we're talking about in the minutes.
It's on the top paragraph of page six, Jim. Five oh vote. The Commissioners voted.
In the, in the alleyway.
Right.
And I recall the setback being from the property line, correct? Yes.
Yeah, I'd be careful about changing something that we voted on.
Yeah, it's a straw vote.
Yeah.
A straw vote. It gets pretty clear.
You pull this off the tape, by the way.
So you're saying somewhere along the way, we agreed that it was three in the alley.
Well, the previous meeting, that was, that was determined.
Okay. All right. Then let's, let the minute stand, and do we have a motion to approve?
I will make a motion to approve the minutes of June 17th for the regular Planning Commission with the change of, on page five, changing the Chair Darden, close the public hearing to Jim Ruland, change the public hearing.
Second. Okay, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
And I believe I have to abstain, and so does the two new members have to abstain? Because I was, I had to recuse on that part. So it'd be 4-0-3. Okay, now, let's see if we can work our way through the minutes from the Planning Commission meeting of June 24th.
I need to recuse. I was not there at the meeting.
Okay.
If there are no changes, I'll move we approve the minutes?
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So once again, it, you can't say.
Oh, no. I'm just automatically, you know. I don't care.
Michael, we'll give you a prod later on. Okay, with that, we'll move on to item six. Now, we've gotten through the minutes. Oral and written communication. Members of the audience may address the commission on matters of public interest which pertain to the city and are not otherwise on the agenda tonight. If you wish to speak, please step forward to the microphone, state your name, city of residence, and make your presentations. Please limit your presentation to three minutes. Eileen, do we have any cards at all? Okay. With that, we'll move on to item seven, Consent Calendar. There's nothing on our consent calendar tonight, so we'll move on to item eight, Public Hearing. Generally, a time limit of 10 minutes for the staff and/or the applicant and other speakers, three minutes. A public hearing process includes a staff presentation and a presentation by the applicant and public testimony. Facilitate the meeting of all attendees, the public is asked to limit their individual presentation to three minutes. Following closure of the public hearing, the Planning Commission will respond to questions raised from the hearing, discuss issues, and act upon the matter by motion. The first item this evening is 831 via suerte, Amendment to Discretionary Sign Permit 06044, Talega Village Center Master Sign Program. Mr. Atamian, how are you tonight?
Thank you, Chair Brown. Congratulations. Welcome to our new Commissioners. My name is Adam Atamian. I'm the Case Manager for the Talega Village Center Master Sign Program Amendment. This is a request to consider some amendments to the Master Sign Program at the Talega Village Center, which is located adjacent to the intersection of Avenida Talega and Avenida Vista Hermosa. Talega and Avenida Vista Hermosa in the Talega specific plan. The specific site addressed for this project is 831 Villa, Villa Suerte, uh, but there is a, another parcel that is also included in this, and I'll get into that description a little bit later. The property is, uh, located, uh, its zone is the commercial portion of, uh, of the mixed use area of the Talega specific plan. The shopping center is, uh, located along a designated scenic corridor, which is Avenida Vista Hermosa. The original ma, uh, master sign program was approved by the planning commission in 2006. Since that time, there was a sign exception permit that, uh, amended a, a part of this application, and that was for, uh, additional signs on the monument. Uh, so technically, this is a, a second amendment request. The, uh, the application for this project came from the, uh, from a, a change in the uses in the center. There, uh, is a new medical office that has combined four suites into one, 7,700 square foot suite. Uh, it's an urgent care medical office use, and the, uh, the, uh, property managers would like to, uh, provide this, uh, user with additional signage, uh, due to their, uh, prominence in the, in the, uh, in the center. I'll go over both of the requests, or all of the requests, I should say, and then I'll talk about the locations of the sign and give you some more background visually. Uh, the applicant is proposing to amend, uh, basically three aspects of the master sign program. Uh, the first is monument signs. There are two monuments, uh, ones on the, both of them are along, uh, Avenida Vista Hermosa, one's at the intersection of Avenida Talega, and the other one's at the intersection of Villa Suerte. Um, and the request is to, is to add the possibility of, of, of one additional sign on the monuments, which currently have two. One of them is the Talega Village Center sign, and the other one is a Ralph's sign. The second, uh, request is to add an additional sign location to one building elevation, uh, which is on the backside of the, of the medical office tenant. And as part of that request, they are proposing to remove five other potential sign locations from that same wall, uh, as a, uh, as an exchange. Uh, all of the signs that are, are being proposed would be, uh, consistent, if, if approved, would be consistent with the design standards of the master sign program, would also be consistent with the ma, maximum amount of signage that this tenant would receive. Uh, and so the signs themselves would be, would be administratively approved. What we're really looking at here is the changes to the master sign program that allow new locations. So on this map, this is the, uh, this is this, the particular portion of the Talega Village Center. The, uh, two monument signs are, are located as, as indicated along Avenida Vista Hermosa. Those signs are, are in a landscape strip, um, that is the, the second parcel. Um, the shops three building is, uh, is the building that has the medical office tenant, and where that arrow is pointing is the, is the elevation. That's the, uh, what I'm calling the rear elevation of this building. That's where the new sign is proposed and the removal of, of the other five signs. So the monument signs are, uh, the, the top picture is what's existing, um, and the bottom sign, uh, the bottom picture is what is, uh, is being proposed. They've basically, uh, taken the square footage of the Ralph's sign and, uh, applied that to their sign, which would be on the, on the left-hand side of this one. Um, this is the one at Avenida Talega and Vista Hermosa. The other one has the signs reversed, but they're, it's essentially the same size monument. And the wall signs, uh, being proposed, the top picture is what's currently allowed in the master sign program, and it shows the, the five, uh, dashed boxes, um, that, on the bottom, you can see those being removed, and the red box is where the, the new sign being proposed, uh, is. This would, uh, the exchange of these signs would effectively reduce, uh, potential sign clutter on the backside of this building and limit, uh, limit them to three signs currently. Uh, this is a picture of the actual sign that they're proposing. Um, you can see in the, in the picture above, this is a, an old photo from Google Maps that shows, uh, previous businesses in there and, and the signs that they have, and so, um, those, the, the potential for those kinds of signs would be gone, and it would be reduced to the two tower elements in this, in this pop-out shown in the lower right. The findings for the amendment to the discretionary sign permit require that, uh, the proposed design is consistent with the general plan and the design guidelines of the Talega specific plan. Uh, staff is supportive of the, uh, alterations to the shops three building signs and the removal of, of, of the existing, uh, locations, um, because it is, it is consistent with both of these documents, which require that signage be, uh, harmonious with the building that it serves and that it, uh, it's of a, uh, quality architectural design. Um, the second ask, uh, the second finding is that the design of the signs, uh, harmonize with the architectural design and details of the building and site that it serves, uh, and for the same reason, uh, we would agree with this on the, on the wall signs. The, uh, third finding is that the signage proposed is appropriate for the distance from which the sign is normally viewed, and, uh, both in the designer review subcommittee, uh, uh, meeting and staff's review, um, the, uh, the size of the sign was discussed, and it's, it's really, it's, uh, it's, it's, it's appropriate for the distance from which it's viewed, but it's also appropriately scale, appropriately scaled for the pop-out that it's on. And then finally, that the provisions of the master sign program ensure consistency among all the signs and, uh, having these signs, uh, be required to be of the same design quality as all of the other existing signs. Staff is supportive of, of, uh, the proposal for the wall sign alterations. However, the general plan, or excuse me, the Talega specific plan, uh, when it talks about monument signs, does not talk about, uh, tenant identification on a monument sign. It talks about the, uh, center, the business center identification, and that was really the intent of the monument signs originally, was to, uh, to indicate that, that you were entering the Talega Village Center, uh, not, not, not necessarily the individual tenants involved. Uh, the designer review subcommittee agreed with this, um, assessment and, uh, you know, and just, and discussed the, uh, you know, the previous approval, uh, of the Ralph's sign, noting that, um, that, that was really a, uh, you know, for the anchor tenant, it was more of a special situation, but, um, you know, due to the size of this tenant, it really didn't make any sense to, uh, to, uh, add additional signage to this monument, uh, for, for this tenant. Secondly, the finding that the design of the sign, uh, harmonizes with the architectural design and details, um, we didn't make that finding either because, uh, if you look at the Ralph's sign, it actually is not very well, uh, it's not very well-integrated with the monument. The monument has a very, has a very rough texture to it, and it, it just doesn't really work with, with that kind of, of pin-mounted lettering, uh, whereas the solid bronze Talega Village Center plaque really works with this. Uh, so for all of these reasons, staff is recommending that the planning commission approve the modifications to the rear wall signs of the shops three building and deny the addition of new monument sign locations. Uh, this concludes staff's presentation. Uh, staff is available for any questions, and the applicant would like to make a presentation.
Okay, is there any questions of staff by the commissioners this time?
Yes, I have a question. Adam, um, question about the, um, the HOA, was Talega, Talega HOA noticed on this and were they, um, asked to, to weigh in on the project and make recommendations?
They were noticed. Uh, I had not heard from them. Um, I sent them an email originally and they didn't, uh, I didn't, I didn't hear back from them, uh, which normally they'd get back if they had a, had an issue.
Okay. I have one more question relative to a, um, condition of approval, which seems to be can, uh, a consistent condition that is, in another item that we'll hear later, it's a three-year commencement term. Is this a standard term for the City of San Clemente, three years to commence a project?
It's, uh, it's standard per the code, however, the planning commission does have the, uh, ability to reduce it or extend it if they wish.
But you seemed a little long, uh, to me. Um, and then finally, the, uh, the extension, so there's a provision there to allow an extension, but there's no definition on the term of that extension?
Uh, the extension, I believe it's for a year.
One year extension?
Yeah.
I would just recommend that we consider adding that language into the conditions of approval, so it's clear. Okay.
Any other questions of staff? At this time, would I like to ask the applicant to come up and make a presentation? Do we have a card, Eileen?
Well, good evening, uh, commissioners. Thank you for, um, agreeing to, uh, to see, uh, our, our request, and thank you to Adam for his hard work in, in trying to find out exactly what we were really endeavoring to do. Um, my name is David Suits. I work for Petra ICS. We're the construction manager and owners representative for the tenant, um, which is Mission Heritage Medical Group, um, which is a, uh, ministry of St. Joseph Hoag Health. Uh, the, um, our goal in, in trying to, uh, or asking for these modifications, um, is primarily, um, to make ourselves visible to the people in the community. Um, this is our first, uh, first venture into, um, San Clemente, and it's been, it's been great so far. We've really had a good, uh, experience working with the, uh, building department and, uh, in developing the project and permitting it and so forth, and so, um, we're happy to be, uh, be in the community, and we're hoping that we can be a benefit to not only the, the, the other tenants in the, uh, in the, in this, um, center, but also to the wider community. Um, the, uh, as Adam mentioned, on the, um, the wall sign, um, our, our request there was to, um, to provide what we felt was a more architecturally, um, pleasing signage on the three main elements of the, uh, of the structure, rather than, uh, than a bunch of smaller signs, and so I appreciate their, uh, their willingness to, to, uh, recommend that one. Um, with the monument sign, I understand Adams, uh, and the, and the, uh, the guys who reviewed it, their objection, um, and their willing, their, uh, not recommending it. Our purpose there was, um, the, when we first, uh, negotiated with Equity One, who was the building owner, um, that was one of the things that they had said that they would, they would attempt to do, would be to get us monument signage. So, um, with regard to their, their response or their willingness to do this, they've been supportive of us, um, of us doing that. When we looked at the site and noticed the, uh, the monument, um, it appeared that it was, um, I don't want to say it's unbalanced, but you have a, a sign that in both cases, um, there's been tenant signage, signage added to one side and lighting on one side. The other side is dark. Um, so it seemed like it would be a, a good way to balance out the, um, the look of the sign with tenant signage on either side of the, uh, of the main, um, development identification. Um, I understand that it's, it's, there was some controversy when the Ralph's sign was put on there, but that we are, since we are a, a fairly major tenant in the site, um, Equity One was willing to let us go forward with attempting to, uh, to see if we could add a sign that would balance out the, uh, the monument. Um, we've asked, um, for signage on both monuments. Um, we would, uh, we would be willing or happy to only have one of those if that was a, a compromised position. Um, again, our, our whole goal here is to, is to make the medical office visible to those in the community and to present, um, to present the health system and Mission Heritage Medical Group as a, as a tenant in that facility. So, again, thank you very much for considering it, and I'll, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to...
Do we have any questions of the applicant at all? David, would you please throw out a card?
Sure.
Green card, so for the record.
I'm, I'm new to this, maybe not as well.
Oh, I'm sorry. Commissioner Eggleson, would I ask you a question? How many square feet is the, uh, is the Mission Heritage Medical Group?
Uh, in this location, about 7,700 square feet.
7,700 square feet.
Yeah, we, we occupy, um, four suites that were previously, four separate tenants that we've combined into one suite.
And those are now vacant? The, the four tenants?
They're, yeah, we, we absorbed.
You absorbed them.
We took the, we combined all four suites into one.
All right, thank you. When you throw out the card, hand it to Eileen, our recording secretary. Thank you very much. Is there anyone else that'd like to, uh, address the commission on this issue? If not, I'll close the, uh, public hearing and we'll, uh, enter into, into comment. I'd like to, uh, yeah. Bart, no, I was gonna, I was gonna ask the design review subcommittee members if they...
Yeah, we reviewed, it was a pleasure working with the applicant. Uh, I think we got a good resolution on the buildings, um, the trade-off of reducing the clutter and getting the major signs. On the monument signs, it wasn't so much the design aspect of it and balancing it and whatnot, it was more of, um... Not thinking that those signs were initially intended for advertising on them, and maybe that the Ralph's sign was an original indiscretion and we shouldn't necessarily follow and suit and do it again. Um, so it was more a fact that these are monument signs for the, uh, development, not for the tenants, and we took that approach and, uh, um, uh, we're very comfortable with that approach. It seemed to be supported by the specific plan and, uh, design guidelines, et cetera. So, uh, that's where we were at on that. Uh, I wouldn't say it was wrong, but it was a, a different choice than I would have made for putting a Ralph's sign on that, particular monument. Thank you.
Jim?
And, uh, I will, uh, echo Bart's comments and add that, uh, I, I think what we also discussed that that, uh, particular road is a scenic view corridor as well, so that's something where we try to keep the, uh, the signage down, um, to, uh, to very much a minimum. And I know because we've already got the Ralph's sign on there, there's an argument of, you know, well, another sign would balance it out, but it also does add to the clutter, um, that's on the sign and, and what we're put, kind of putting out there into the public view corridor. So, I think that's why we were, uh, went the way we did with the design review. But I, I do think with the other signage, it was probably a good trade on everyone's part in terms of, I think we reduced the overall square footage of the signage, and there's less actual signs in terms of the, um, the actual business on the inside, so I think that actually worked out for everyone.
Briefly interject a couple of comments and then we'll get over to you, uh, Michael. But I, as I drove up there, uh, from various aspects, uh, the first, uh, as I crossed the, the Talega Bridge right past, uh, La Pata there, I could see a Ralph's sign right on the monument side of their tower on the west side, so I knew exactly where I needed to go. And I, as I went up, Mr. Hermosa turned right into the center, I knew the monument sign was there mainly because I'd read the briefing, but otherwise, my first scan was, I looked down the main road and there was another, uh, monument sign on the, on the other corner of Ralph's where, on the architecture. So the first, my first visibility to the Ralph's was the two signs that are on the Ralph's building, and I turned around and came from the other direction and found the other same way, so I kind of concluded that probably should have never put a Ralph's sign on the monument sign to begin with, but that's just a comment that, that, just approaching the site to take a look at it was, I could tell there was a Ralph's there from a mile away, and, uh, I never looked at the monument sign other than I knew it was there because of the briefing, so, just a side comment. Uh, you had your light on, Michael?
Yes, I too think that challenging the intent of the Talega specific plan any further would, would not be the best move. I, I agree that, uh, you know, keeping that marker, or markers as-is, uh, without further intensification would be a wise move. However, if this body should move in the direction of supporting the applicant's request, it might be a good idea to take a look at, a closer look, maybe Adam has more information on this, the, uh, the lighting design and what this is going to look like at night, and if there is a change to it, that we incorporate some language that would ensure some integrity with the other corners, as well as the other entry point on Villa Suerte. This is a four-corner situation, it's not just the one. We've got four matching, semi-matching corners, and there was intent there for the entire intersection, to have certain continuity and feel, not just with the brickwork and the signage, but with the lighting and landscaping. So I think that'd be an important factor to consider.
Singh, would you, do you have any, uh, comments you'd like to make? I'm just kind of working my way out, we're, outwards towards the...
Yeah, I, I do agree on the applicant's statement that, like, starting to balance and coming to that.
Put your microphone on, please.
I do agree the applicant's statement that putting...
I do agree the applicant's statement that putting a new sign on the left side will balance the current design of the monumentation. However, the design intent of that monumentation is for the center, not for individual tenant, and that is very true. So also, by looking at the texture of the background, the applicant's sign happened to have lots, two lines and a small text. It doesn't seem to read very well in that background. And I wonder if the applicant will be open to have, to put a sign on the north elevation, on a tower at the corner, and maybe that's another possibility, they can get a little better visibility, not on the monumentation wall.
Okay. Commissioner Eccleston?
I'm supportive of the facade sign and the elimination of the other signs that are there. However, this is a scenic view corridor, and scenic view corridors are really, really important to, I think, all of us. And so I would not be supportive of an official sign on the monument sign.
Michael?
I agree that the monument sign seems overdone and not very appropriate and kind of hard to read, and I don't think it adds to anything. I feel okay about the building sign, but I would also be concerned if we have to trade that off with another sign on the building somewhere else, which I wouldn't support. I think the one sign is appropriate.
Okay. With any other discussion, we'll entertain a-
One little, just quick comment, and it was very observant, talking about trade-offs and trying to get into the lighting. We had a very long discussion in design review of, the applicant came in and proposed for one building and the monument signs. Once we take the monument signs out, we were hesitant to burden them with additional changes to their sign program, in the concern that they came to us to get the sign program, and we don't want to make it too onerous, and we appreciated them bringing the signs to us. But I appreciate the comments on updating the lighting and all, but we were hesitant at the time to impose that on them.
Is there any other discussion on this issue? Or is someone ready to make a motion?
I'd like to make the motion and move the resolution of the planning commission of the City of San Clemente, California approving amendment to discretionary sign permit 06-044 to like a Village Center master sign program amendment to amend the master sign program to modify the locations of signs on the rear east-facing wall of the shops three building, and deny the addition of the new monument sign locations on the center's two monument signs located at 831 Via Suerte.
Second.
Okay, we have a first motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Passage, seven to zero. That will move on to item 8B. 801 North El Camino Real discretionary sign permit 14394 Rite Aid sign program.
Good evening, Chair.
How are you doing?
Doing well, thanks, planning commissioners. It's a request to have a larger wall sign at 801 North El Camino Real. Rite Aid wishes to have a sign larger than 25 square feet in an area that was included in the extension of the architectural overlay as part of the 2014 general plan update. And so the zoning ordinance says if you have a wall sign larger than 25 square feet, but up to 64 square feet, it requires this permit, discretionary sign permit. That's why this project's being processed this way. And there's, if we can go to attachment five of your report, it shows a diagram of the sign, and really, it's a redesign of the Rite Aid sign. And staff supports this application with the understanding that the materials and the architectural overlay signs are supposed to be handcrafted in appearance, and there's encouraged materials, pin mount and letters, and halo illumination. The design that's before you is consistent with other wall signs that have been approved along El Camino Real in a similar context. Their commissioner Wu had contacted me before the meeting and found a, had a great observation that there's some spacing between the pharmacy row of copy below the Rite Aid. There's a little bit of space there, the six inches of spacing between the text, and the zoning ordinance accounts for that space in the calculation of sign area. We do not account for that in our, the plans doesn't account for that. So when you account for that area, it's over 64 square feet. So the overall staff supports the permit request with a condition of approval that we're recommending, that the sign plans be revised through the plan check process to modify the dimensions accordingly, so that the sign area is no greater than 64 square feet. And maybe the legal counsel could-
So the city attorney has a recommendation for one of the conditions, or do staff have a condition of approval to add?
I could polish it up if you want.
Is there any other, any more portion of your staff report to offer? Is there any questions of the staff?
You indicated that it's consistent with other signage along El Camino Real. However, the examples that we have here in attachment four, there's just one line of signage. Here, there's two lines of signage with the pharmacy sign underneath it. Are there, do you know of any other signs along El Camino Real that are rather newer signs that have two lines of signage?
I can't think of any. There's no, nothing in the code that precludes that.
All right, thank you.
Michael, you had your-
Yeah, I do have a question. On the photo drawing filled-out sheet, the new Rite Aid proposal shows that Rite Aid is three feet high. And there's a picture of the existing Rite Aid sign below that. Do you know how tall those letters are?
Four foot 10. The pharmacy words?
No, the right, the existing Rite Aid sign, the height of those letters compared to the three-foot-high letters of Rite Aid above. Rite Aid, to me, looks, and the proposal looks like bigger letters than the existing, taller, bigger letters.
They are larger. When we went to the design review committee, we pointed that out, and the conclusion was that the change in the font type and the materials overall has a countereffect of, while the sign is larger, the design in itself offsets that. That's some of the comments that we received during design review, if I'm taking that in the right context, that the design overall is more pleasing, and that the proportions, in particular, the staff report has the existing and proposed dimensions on there. If you wanted to see that, that's table one, page two, the staff report. So the proposed sign, I have at four feet 10 inches of height, two rows of text, and the existing signs at three feet.
Do you know the height of the existing Rite Aid sign?
I'm saying it's three feet.
Three feet?
Yes.
Same as the new sign? It doesn't look that way to me.
No, the new sign, when you combine the pharmacy with the Rite Aid-
No, I'm just talking about the word Rite Aid. It's three feet tall. And the Rite Aid on the existing facade, I'm wondering if the letters are three feet tall as well or smaller.
That's the best information I have for you, that they're the same.
It actually looks like they're the same.
I think it's-
Put a scale to both of them, they're actually the same exact height. In proportion to the overall.
It's one is all caps, it looks, it's the illusion of-
Yeah, it's just an illusion. It's all caps and moved up.
So we're saying we think it is the same height?
Mm-hmm, yes.
And I think the fact that we are going to bring it back down to the correct square footage total, they're within their sign size, and the new, I don't want to call it more sophisticated or elegant style, the font, though, is certainly more appealing and not quite as five-and-dime as the current sign.
Thank you, Bart. Zen, you had your light on?
Yes, first answer Wayne's question. The Mission Heritage Medical Group has two lines. We just reviewed.
Good point.
On this image, I have two items to talk about. The first is the rendering here is what we call photomontage. It's supposed to be a photorealistic image. I actually measured this text on the new sign. By using the canopy of the tree, you can tell that the new Rite Aid is narrower than the existing one. But according to your comparison of the existing and the proposed length, the proposed length is 17 feet 3 inches. The existing one is 16'9". It's longer, so your image, the new proposed Rite Aid on the rendering is not correctly scaled. I measured and estimated that it's 10% narrower. If we keep the proportion, that means the height is also 10% less, which results in 20% less area visually. Now, if the dimension is two, and we make the correction and shrink it to 64 square feet, that will still do, it's just the look is, should be bigger than what you show here. Another item is the way we measure the signage. According to the zoning requirement, my understanding is, any design, whether it consists of letters or graphics, it should be considered a single piece, and we measure the total height or the total dimension before we get to the total area. When you have a round, maybe you can just measure the round, but when we have a T, I'm not sure if we can come around and have a re-entering corner to reduce the measurement number. So the way to measure a signage needs to be clarified.
Okay, that's something we can do when we update the zoning ordinance. Just right now, it's subject to the interpretation of the planning commission, really, in this instance, because the definition of sign area, it's to the outer limits of text, emblems and such, whatever's in the sign content. And so the precedent sometime now has been, in this particular situation, is to box out each text row, and that you account for the text in that area. So if we were to change it, as you suggest, then that would be a policy change or a zoning amendment to clarify, change in direction there.
Okay. Thank you for your observation.
Comment, staff? Hi, Chris. Would you mind putting up a shot of the sign that's proposed again? If you can peek that.
Sure.
Right, I'm going to get, yeah. So we'll see staff's, within the packet, what staff has.
We don't have the package.
You had it up a minute ago?
No, I just have the plans.
Okay, well, in the packet, we see a sort of a red font, and we see the word Rite Aid all in caps, in pharmacy just below it, which is consistent with the Rite Aid logo, the current logo that they're using nationally. Went out to the site yesterday and took a look at the building, and I made some observations. And with those observations and these ideas in my mind, I went to the internet and I started clicking around, looking at different examples of their current logo. And one such, I've got two to show, to share with everybody here, and one is, if you could just pull up example one to the right of that, that's fine. But I have a point to make on this image, so we get back to that. So if you can go to the next one. Okay, so here's an example. As you can see, the word pharmacy is up closer to the words Rite Aid. That's not consistent with what is in the applicant's submittal here, in the graphic. And there's another example right next to it, and there's hundreds of them you can find. So that seems to be consistently what their logo envelope looks like. So that helps with the, you know, the square footage, just to squeeze it all together, it could help a little bit. This image here is, rose a question, and that is, that, well, that's the old logo. That's consistent with what's on the wall now. So what is going to happen with this sign? Are we going to leave it there? That's the first thing you see when you're driving down El Camino Real. It's an old sign. I like the scale of it, it's great, but it begs the question. Maybe that's another application another day, but that's something that we can put a pin in that and know that it's hopefully coming soon, so we can be a little more consistent with things.
So any other questions?
Yeah, I do, I do have one other observation, so if you just go back to the desktop again and just, this is my final comment, yes. Looking at the location of the current signage, and also, if you notice the backdrop, not consistent at all with the materials that are provided in the package in terms of coloration. The pack, the images in the packet are very washed out, and you lose some of the detail. You lose a little diamond, you lose the etching, you know, that's on the facade of that building. And the way the applicant's got to propose now is their new sign is sitting right on top of that detail, which seems to compete with that. And I think that, you know, maybe there's some massaging that could be done on the design there, maybe bring it down. And if you're scaling, there's a person in this image, it's approximately six feet tall, you can kind of scale that out based on this image. It looks like there's plenty of room to get their new sign in there with, you know, pharmacy, the new logo, and still be underneath those details on the facade. And then finally, my question is, did we work with the applicant on the sign color?
Yes, we did.
Would the applicant be willing to consider a white sign, maybe, as an option?
Well, staff, staff doesn't really suggest that, because they're, in the design guidelines and the sign guidelines within the zoning ordinance encourages colors that contrast with the building color. So if the building color were dark and the white, the sign were white, then that seems consistent with the guidelines. But having a dark bronze sign like this, pretty consistent with what you see.
Okay, so the sign itself will be bronze, not red, as depicted in the-
Correct.
What appears to be red.
Dark bronze, yeah.
Oh, that's, that would be very nice.
Haloed, yeah.
Okay.
Very similar to the F and M Bank signs.
Okay.
Similar to that.
That would be nice, thank you.
And then you had, should I address your questions? Okay. So with regard to the spacing between the rows of copy, staff has recommended a condition of approval to modify the dimensions to 64 square feet. A motion could be made to direct staff to look at opportunities to push the sign, the sign area accordingly, you know, push the rows of copy in that way.
You've got six inches right now between the Rite Aid and the pharmacy, so you could probably just squeeze it right there.
Yes.
Yeah, I don't want to see it get too close. It will feel crowded. I mean, I don't think it really affects the overall square footage if we're going to bring it down. But if everything comes down accordingly to meet the 64, I'm good with that.
Michael?
I just, I want to be clear here. You're saying that because we didn't figure in the space between the larger and the smaller sign, that this whole thing would be proportionately shrunk a little? Is that what you're saying, would be smaller?
Correct.
Yeah. I like that idea a lot, actually. Thanks.
The second observation was with the pole sign, and staff did have discussions with the applicant on a couple occasions about that sign, and then there's a sign above the drive-through canopy, a directional sign. And we had encouraged the applicant to modify those signs. And what's a change of copy, it's a separate process from this, when you're changing the content of the sign, not the dimensions. And there's limitations in the code that identify what a change of copy is. So it's separate from this process, and we had encouraged them to change the color and the font to match with the sign, and we haven't received- the font to match with the sign, and we haven't received an application yet for that, but we'll continue to encourage them in that way.
Okay.
And then you had a question about the location, and we can consider that when they change the, if the signs approve, we can look at that issue as well, and the changing of the plans.
Mr. Ruhl?
Do we have an applicant? Actually, no, I have a, I do have a question.
Okay.
This, there is no master sign program for this application, for this applicant, correct?
Yes.
And what is needed for a master sign program? Is it three signs?
Oh, there is no master sign program, but to have one, you need four or, to modify or add four more signs.
Okay.
And they're, they're only doing one technically.
All right.
Well, they're just underneath that threshold, so we can trigger that.
Is the applicant here at all willing to, or would like to speak? I guess the applicant's not here. For that, I'll open the public hearing. Is anybody from the public want to speak on this issue? In hearing, no one from the public come forward, we'll close the public hearing and we'll enter into discussion. Any other items to discuss?
Pretty much discussed.
Okay, we did with, well, with the items, the question to staff, actually. If there's no other question, you have a question, Michael, or a statement?
This is a question really to us commissioners, that what I'm hearing now is that we're going to be seeing something different, different in scale, it's going to be proportionately shrunk, and this will be a smaller sign. And Commissioner Blackwell, I think, points out a very good aspect of this, that the positioning of this sign is currently with a new, the new one is kind of in conflict with those little squares and the grid on the facade. And I agree with him that that'll look odd. And I'm just wondering if we would rather see a resubmission of this before we approve it, or do you think we can wordsmith it in such a way that it'll get where we want it to go? Question.
I'd like to see if we possibly can condition it to get it to where it needs to be, both from the square footage standpoint and far as allow the city planner to ensure that there's proper positioning on the building, you know, towards that effect, if we can craft something to that. Is there a consensus in that?
If the commission would like, I could suggest some wording changes to one of the conditions to accommodate those two comments. I'd suggest we amend condition number eight, which reads right now, prior to the issuance of the building permit, the owner or designated shall obtain approval of administrative sign permit providing plans that demonstrate the signage will be, and then add these words, no larger than the required sixty-four square feet, comma, located to better fit the design elements of the facade and in substantial conformance with the exhibits approved by the planning commission.
Capture all that, Bart? Okay. If there's no further discussion, I'll entertain.
Okay.
You have a question?
Yeah. I would agree with Michael's comment, because I'm looking at the new image, the top left corner of the R sits right on one of the diamond, and that may not look good. So, if it's possible, I'd like to see a revision of that image with the correct size, correct location.
I think possibly the wording that the city planners offered basically says that, to allow the city plan, make sure the applicant submits a drawing to him after we approve it, to shrink the square footage and in fact reposition it. Is that what, would you read the language again, Mr. Petches?
Well, to condition number eight, we're asking for two caveats. One would be to scale the sign down to the appropriate size that is within sixty-four square feet. So, adding the wordage, no larger than sixty-four square feet handles that. Then the second part, getting at the, which I completely understand and agree, that we want that new sign to fit within that space, so it doesn't disrupt the facade design, we're adding located to better fit the design elements of the facade. So, those two things added to this condition will ensure that staff evaluates the sign and scales it down. We do this all the time. Isn't a real big issue to make sure that it fits and it's properly designed, based on the commission's direction.
Just, maybe just a word for our new members, that kind of, sort of what we're doing here, adding a condition that allows staff to kind of make a determination of, you know, the proper position for something like this. If we're all, you know, it's kind of, it's not uncommon for us if we think, well, it's, you know, pretty much there, but there's some things like this that we'd like to see differently. This allows the application to move forward rather than coming back to us in a couple of weeks and making the applicant wait. If, you know, if there was a majority who said, yeah, we need to see the sign again, then I, you know, I certainly wouldn't be opposed to that. But just so you know, this is kind of a not uncommon technique we use to help the applicant, you know, go quicker, but still give direction to staff in terms of what we'd like to see.
At the same time, you know, accommodate your very good astute measurements and observations, and both of you, you know, both you for the facade and you from the square footage, which is our good catches.
Well, I will make a motion that, to approve Resolution PC 15024, Resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of San Clemente, California, approving discretionary sign permit 14394, Rite Aid sign, and request to allow a wall sign larger than twenty-five square feet in the architectural overlay district on a site located 801 North El Camino Real, with the amendment to condition of approval eight, to be inserted between signage will be no larger than the required sixty-four square feet and better fit the facade design elements, and leave that to staff's review.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All, any opposed? Passes seven zero. And so, now moving on to General Plan Amendment fifteen, zoning amendment fourteen dash four five six, and General Plan Amendment fifteen dash zero four nine with Mr. Wright, Mr. Hare.
Commissioner Brown, staff would like to request a brief recess so that we can pass out some materials.
Okay, we'll have a
Thank you.
A brief ten-minute recess.
Let me call the meeting back to order for the planning commission meeting of eight July twenty fifteen. We'll now proceed with item eight C zoning amendment fourteen dash four five six and general plan amendment fifteen dash zero four four nine. Mr. Wright and Mr. Hare, this is continued from six seventeen to two thousand and fifteen. I will have to recuse on this item since my five hundred foot brown act circle whenever one extends into El Comino Real in that section where I've had to recuse during the entire general plan amendment. And additionally, it also extends through another property effort that's associated with it. So at this time, I will hand the gavel over to Mr. Ruhl in the vice chair and step aside. I would like to comment, Mr. Wright, on his excellent map efforts here that we received for this briefing. I think they're super. Thank you.
And for members of the public, because of recusals needed in this, we're basically doing this in three sections. Commissioner Brown will be back, or Chairman, excuse me, Chairman Brown will be back after we go through the first section here. So Chris, you want to get us, get us going?
Sure. Vice Chair Commissioners, as mentioned, this is a continued item from June seventeenth. There's been several meetings on this, this application, which was initiated by the city council on February third to clean up various items in the general plan, clarify and to make several land use changes in seven main areas of the city that are noted in the minutes. And in particular, there's discussion. Okay, thanks. And what we've done here is split up this agenda item into three parts based upon the corums and conflict of interests of when property commissioners are within five hundred feet of particular items. We've noted that, looked, looked at those conflict of interest maps and organized it in such a way where commissioners can take part in as many items as possible and, and it will just flow forward accordingly. What we've done here in particular is part one, I can narrate what the parts are. Part one is for the mixed use three point two area and other items on South El Comino Real. Part two is regarding a zoning change to have the limits of a zone go along the property lines on El Comino Real just south of the I five freeway. Well, I'll show you maps to, to look at these things. And then part three is everything else, and there's a list of other things which we can get into now. There's one other thing before we go forward. When we get to part three, staff is recommending that the commission pull any particular items that the commission, any commissioners want to discuss or have concerns with and move the balance of whatever is not pulled, kind of like a consent calendar. If forty of the fifty are okay with the commission and there aren't any questions or comments, staff recommends, requests that the commission make one motion and move those items so that we can focus on the items of particular concerns to the commission instead of discussing all forty items, which could take a lot of time. Before I move forward, are there any questions about that?
And just to clarify, in this section, this is, this is part one of three. We're covering MU three point two areas, NC two, NC three areas, and the architectural overlay extension, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Just so for members of the public who are wondering what we're focusing on in this first stage.
These are the items here, twenty-nine, twenty-two, and forty-one on the general plan map. This is the general plan numbers here. So that, that brings me to, what we've done is created these tables, key, keys tables that go with these maps. And it helps to describe the particular items that staff's proposing changes on. And so there are, in some cases, general plan changes, in some cases, zoning changes. And what we've done is created a map book to go with the general plan changes and the zoning changes. And learning from the last meeting, what we've done is created a separate attachment here to make it easy to flip through. So what I suggest you do is on this particular item, part one, it's going to be on the grid G four for both the general plan and the zoning. So then you could easily figure out where we are. And also, I want to note, we had passed out some materials before this, this item. And what we've done is we've reprinted the packet with page numbers in the lower right-hand corner from front to back to make it easy to discuss this item tonight. And we made a couple cleanups, nothing substantive, and I can go over those, clarify what I mean if you want. But it's nothing I would think that is of great concern to the commission. It's more clarifying a couple of things that the commission already knows. So everybody turn to that page? Okay. So to provide a little history here, first I'll start with the slumper items. Items two, twenty-two, twenty-two is an extension of the architectural overlay. There's, in the general plan, a policy regarding this. And the intent, when the general plan was adopted, to extend it to the I five freeway, however, it's not noted as such. And so staff is proposing a change to clarify that and to extend it down to the I five freeway on the south end of town for this particular part of the agenda item. So that's item twenty-two. Forty-one is somewhat related to that. It's, it's a staff recommended change since April twenty-second where we're proposing that some alleys be included in the architectural overlay given the focus of general plan. There's, there's some encouraging policies to beautify our alleys. And to be consistent with that, we're recommending that we include those alleys to further those goals. So that's items twenty-two and forty-one. Which brings us to item twenty-nine, which is what we've been primarily discussing since April twenty-second. At the last meeting, staff was given direction, here, I have this table here, to help everybody. And it shows us where we've been and what staff's recommending now. What we, what we've done here is, since April twenty-second, April twenty-second going back, staff had proposed some changes to the standards, including a height ceiling that would limit the maximum plate line above the front lot line elevation to a maximum of thirty-five feet to the top of roof and thirty feet to the plate line. That was our recommendation on April twenty-second. That would be a new standard for the, then mixed use three point two zone. That would be unique to this, to these properties, given that the slopes go from El Comino Real and drop down. And the city council direction was to reduce the number of stories from three to two facing El Comino Real with three stories facing the alley. And this is one, this is one limitation we came up with to achieve those goals. And the, the conversation continued after that. I, I don't want to bury, I'm just, for the new commissioners, I want to make sure that everything's known. So on June third and June seventeenth, we revisited this topic. And so the April twenty-second meeting is shown here in this column. So I noted a height ceiling of thirty feet to plate line and thirty-five to the top of roof based on conversations with local design professionals and our own research on accommodating, accommodating building codes and market trends and whatnot and trying to stay true to the council direction along El Comino Real. When we went back to the, the commission on June third, we were given direction to include some additional standards such as a, a standard relating to open area. Having a certain amount of open area between buildings and street-facing and alley-facing frontages. So that was added, see here, so right here, that was added. Fifty percent of urban open area at street level between street-facing building facade and property lines adjacent to streets and alleys. And this is our draft ordinance. So these gray cells show where changes were not made since April twenty-second. And then whatever's white with text is showing where changes remain. So this is showing that there was a change to the open, in addition of an open area standard. There was text added to clarify an intent that building floor area behind El Comino Real should appear no higher than three stories above grade to define the intent a little bit. The height ceiling was recommended by the commission, we changed from, to be reduced, two feet across the board, two, two feet plate line, two feet top of roof. And the idea behind that was to limit building mass, concerns with building mass, having too much building mass. In particular, at the time, a lot of the discussion was focused on the alley side of the properties. We had proposed a thirty-foot setback where, within thirty feet of the rear property line, if the height of the buildings exceeded twenty-eight feet to a plate line and thirty-three feet top of roof, the building above that height would have to be set back thirty feet, affixed thirty feet across the property. And that's all measured from the height of the rear property line, so essentially the, the alley level. And there's a number of reasons why we proposed such a thing. I can, I can clarify if you want to ask me. But we were directed to look at options to provide a little bit more flexibility to promote offsets in architectural design. So what we've come up with is a, an average setback. Currently, in our draft ordinance, the average is thirty feet. So that, let's say if a project had a twenty-foot setback to the rear property line, then a equal proportion of, of the building would have to be set back forty feet, whatever, again, is taller than essentially thirty-three feet above the alley. Well, and then a minimum, so no closer than ten feet. Staff, in looking at this, we had, there was some public testimony at the last meeting about the concern of not being able to have split-level garages and reducing the height ceiling would potentially make that an impossible feature in a lot of these properties where the elevation gradient is not really large. It's kind of in that mid-range between ten and fourteen feet between El Comino Real and the alley where it can be more difficult to fit in a, a split-level garage where you access off a side street. So we looked into that and concluded that we're recommending we go back to the initial recommended height ceilings of thirty-five feet to the top of roof and thirty feet to the plate line, recognizing that there are design guidelines that are also used with zoning standards to guide development projects to a certain point where it's compatible with cities' goals and adjacent properties. So looking at the fact that there's a discretionary process where it's not a fixed standard in all instances and that not all these properties are the same, some have greater slopes than others, have their own unique constraints, and to allow for architects to design around those constraints, staff's recommending that the, the initial height ceiling limits. If I could just go through all these and then-
Absolutely.
...answer questions? So after June, after the April twenty-second meeting, there was a, a recommendation to include a certain amount of storage space for each residential unit, requiring that, it would be a new requirement in the city, that would only be applied to the mixed use three point two zone for now. And so there was a draft standard that we had shown the planning commission as a model, and we have adapted that to the mixed use three point two zone, and it's in the draft ordinance. The last thing to really note is the alternative standards staff is presenting tonight. It's attachment seven to your staff report. So I already talked about one of them, it's to have that initial height ceiling at thirty-five feet to the top of roof. The second thing is to have an average alley setback of twenty-five feet versus thirty feet. The reason staff's recommending this is because a thirty-foot average setback would mean that some sections would have to be, like I said, forty feet back if you have others within twenty feet. Well, from the beginning of this conversation, we had recommended that there be a thirty-foot setback along the alley. So essentially, it's making it more restrictive than what we talked about the last meeting. And we think that it's just overly restrictive and defeats the overall goals here. Again, recognize that there's design guidelines to guide the process. So we're recommending a twenty-five-foot average, which would essentially allow some building sections to be twenty feet from the rear property line and others to be then thirty feet. And then the last thing that we're recommending here in alternative standards is to set the minimum commercial floor area based upon the size of the project and not on the size of the property. We're recommending this to account for the conversation that we've been having over the last meetings. Since the general plan was adopted and this process began, that, the conversation has been essentially about concerns with building mass and trying to have standards that promote buildings that essentially are going to, as a result of more standards, going to be smaller. And so by recognizing that, we want to promote the goal of this area is to incentivize development along El Comino Real, it's been vacant for years. And so to offset the new limitations that are being, that are being proposed here, like the new height ceiling, the going from three stories to two stories and average alley setback, we're recommending that the, the size of, the amount of commercial area be based on the size of the project because essentially that facilitates smaller buildings. You're not having a fixed amount of commercial space regardless of the size of the building. It's not fixed on the size of the property, it's fixed on the size of the project. So if you want to choose to have a smaller building, it's based on the size of the building. It's not based on how big the lot is. And if that's what the conversation has been going towards, basing everything on the size of the building. So that's what we're recommending. And the twenty-five percent project floor area is really close to the current floor area, floor area ratio that's required, the point three five. So that concludes my presentation on this part.
Chris, could you explain a little bit more, because I don't know if we really covered it? The, the commission asked us to look at the public comment that we couldn't fit the second level off the side street for parking-
Yes.
-and why you concluded that the height needed to be raised back up?
Yes, I can. So when we looked into that issue, there's some main constraints that it just makes it tougher on those mid-level lots where the, the gradient of elevation isn't as much, ten to fourteen feet between the two sides of the lots. And when you have, there's engineering design guidelines that there can't be a max slope of a driveway that, so you have the driveway approach from the side street going into the building. And the driveway can't be too steep. And that the, there has to be a minimum driveway approach, you know, to meet that slope. It has to go so far so that the slope doesn't, it isn't too, too significant. So you have to go far enough from the street. And as you go further into the property, you're making it more and more difficult to get clearance underneath that level for basement parking. And also, you're pushing up the ceiling of that mid-level garage into where space would be provided for commercial suites or residential suites. So it makes it more difficult to have a functional floor plan and could cut into the floor area of, of that part of the project. So there, there's, those are the main key constraints that become exasperated by having a lower height ceiling.
Are there any questions for staff?
Looks like, looks like we have a few questions. On the percentage of, where would we address a project that comes in and wants to do a sandwich shop with a large patio and outdoor eating as far as it's twenty-five percent of the building area? Is usable area for his little restaurant and sandwich shop could be twenty-five percent, but maybe eighteen percent of that is open air outside? Where would we address that so that can happen, if we choose to have it happen? If we say twenty-five percent is a hard number here?
Well, there's a general plan policy where it's, it's recommending that we look into having new standards that, that provide almost a, a credit, a credit for open space, say, outdoor dining in particular. And right now, we're not addressing that, we're just focused on the, the standard that we have. Right now, we have a minimum commercial floor area on all the properties, we're just essentially recommending a change in how it's applied. Just to be a little bit more direct is, you want to get a credit for the outdoor dining, then twenty-five percent would be across the board for the project. So, so you take the suite where the, the food is made and all that, those functions of the use, that would go towards the twenty-five percent, not the outdoor dining area.
I'm inclined to kind of want the outdoor dining area to maybe go towards it because we're getting more open area, a bigger courtyard, and can we do an asterisk or something here and say-
Yeah, yeah, it was the, the, well, the commission, we could add a provision in here that gave credit for outdoor dining areas. I'd suggest that it would need to go above and beyond the required open space already, you know, so in other words, they're basically exchanging outdoor seating area for building area. And in that case, I think that we could, if the commission's well was to do that, we could add a provision like that.
Wayne?
I have a number of questions, but I'll take them individually after other comments from commissioners. The, the proposal to, for the minimum required commercial square feet, you're changing that from the lot size, the point-three-five lots, as compared to the lot size, to the twenty-five percent of the floor area, correct?
Of the project.
Okay, of the project. Can you, my first question on this issue is, can you define what you mean by project floor area?
I mean, project floor area excluding parking garages.
Does that, and so, does that mean just the leasable area?
No, no, it includes hallways, stairways to the, to the outer limits of the building with some exceptions, so like-
And all the residential?
Okay. So, the, the, the example that I have here is that before we were considering a point-three-five for the lot size. And let's just take, for example, a typical, let's just say a ten-thousand-square-foot lot size. So before, that was thirty-five-hundred square feet for commercial.
Yes.
Is that correct? Okay. So let's just assume that for a, a, a floor area, which you have there, that the floor area would be eight-thousand square feet on the same type of, of, of ten-thousand-square-foot lot. And now, we're doing twenty-five percent.
Yes.
So now, we would be doing a tw- a two-thousand-square-foot commercial area versus a thirty-five-hundred-square-foot commercial area.
Yes.
So what we're doing then is reducing the, the commercial area in, in this, in this example, is that correct?
It, it is, but considering the fact, the idea behind this is that these other standards that are being proposed are driving the buildings to be smaller. And so, a developer, a, is going to do a project based not just on the commercial floor area, but also on the residential floor area. And if we're applying new standards that are essentially reducing the size of buildings, it is really what staff is hearing, we're encouraging smaller buildings, or reducing it from three stories to two stories, or applying new limits on the alley side and new height ceiling, or applying all these new rules, essentially to make buildings smaller than what they're currently allowed in the general plan. By having it based on the, the project area, you're making it, you're, you're accounting for that. So if we're going to have a building, say, before the general plan amendment, could be fifteen-thousand square feet, and now it could be ten-thousand square feet, well, that's a cost to a property owner, and so count, it, it's balancing that, it's balancing, it's balancing and encouraging essentially smaller buildings.
But it is not, but is it also encouraging more, more residential versus commercial? Because in a mixed-use project, what we're trying to do is to encourage a pedestrian-friendly area, we're trying to encourage mixed use with commercial, with restaurants, a bakery, a, a sandwich shop or something of that nature. But here, it seems that we're trying to really reduce the, the commercial square footage versus the residential.
Understood. This is, part of the challenge is, by making the building smaller and having the commercial square footage based on the lot, essentially the proportion of the commercial to the residential uses in the building is changing. You are requiring a greater proportion of the building floor area to be commercial and less and less to be residential because it's all fixed on this lot size. If you change that dynamic where it's based on the building size, you're, everything is proportional, it's all proportional the size of the building.
Let's just, let me add something in. Now, Wayne, your example was an FAR for the lot of being less than one, okay? The FAR allowed for the zone is one-point-five. So if you took a ten-thousand-square-foot lot and a building that built out to its maximum, the commercial ratio, which isn't based on the lot size, is based, based on the building size, would go up. So in that case, the building size would have to be, the commercial component of a fifteen-thousand-square-foot lot would be three-thousand-seven-hundred-and-fifty square feet versus the example you provided of three-thousand-five-hundred. So, Chris's idea is that rather than base it on the size of the lot, because as you downsize these things, and the idea of trying to make these things still feasible economically, you also needed to downsize the proportion of the commercial, because if you get a small lot and you're still demand, say you wanted to do a thousand-square-foot building for some odd reason, you couldn't actually do it because you'd have to have a three-thousand-five-hundred-square-foot commercial space, it would be required. So, I like the idea of proportionality for, for the size of the building to the commercial, having that ratio stay the same depending on the size of the building. If you don't agree with the, the twenty-five percent is too small, then maybe we might want to think about raising it up a little bit if you're concerned there's not enough commercial. But that was, I think, our thought was, we're, we're pushing these buildings into a smaller size, so maybe the ratio doesn't belong with the lot any longer, maybe the ratio is better applied to the commercial or the size of the building.
Okay, I'm gonna have to think about that a little bit more, because it just seems to me that we're, we're reducing the ratio between commercial, residential, and encouraging more residential versus commercial.
Smaller buildings, yes.
Well, then there shouldn't, should there not be then a, a difference between smaller versus larger buildings when we're applying these types of ratios?
The commission wants to have two different types of ratios based on a certain size of building, that's possible.
Okay, I'm gonna think about that for-
I don't know what it would be right now.
Yeah, I don't either.
It would be complicated, you'd have to make sure that there aren't any unintended consequences, but we could entertain some-
Well, one thing we could do is have a minimum amount of commercial required no matter what the size of the building, because at some point, the commercial space would be too small to use, right?
Yeah.
So we could set it at five-hundred square feet or whatever the commission thought was comfortable. Five-hundred is kind of, I think, the standard of the minimum commercial space required in order for it to be functional. So when you get those little tiny lots, like in the downtown where we have the forty-by-a-hundred, you know, we still have at least a space that's usable for commercial.
Okay, I'm gonna give that some thought. My second issue here is with regard to the height. And I've always been concerned with regard to the heights that we've been talking about. So I went back to a, the city council meeting on January the twentieth, two thousand and fifteen, and the staff made a proposal at that time. And this whole issue then was then continued until the February the third meeting, when the council actually gave us direction for the two-story on El Camino and the three-story in the alley. But part of that, part of that staff recommendation at that time was, I can read it here, and this was the MU three-point-two, the plate line was twenty-three feet and the top of the roof of El Camino is thirty feet. So we've come a, a, a big distance since your original proposal to city council. Could you explain why you have gone from twenty-three feet to thirty feet plate line and from thirty feet top of roof to thirty-five feet top of roof?
Yeah, we've learned more as we've gone through this process and talking with building professionals, understanding the dynamics of the sites more. We spent more time on this and evaluated more, there's, it's a complicated zone, because not all the lots are, it's, the lots aren't, they're, they're slope lots, they don't all have a consistent slope to them. So on a lot where you have a significant slope differential, differential between the two sides, it's a lot easier to build around that, to have a basement parking level with the side-street access garage. If you have a, and the, I'd say the vast majority of these properties in the zone, it's that mid-range, it's between ten to fifteen feet of grade difference between El Camino Real and the alley, and it gets more challenging to design around that. We also looked at the Bartlett Building, and that was discussed as an example during the general plan update, as seen as a model building to, to work towards and having projects like that. And we, we found the plans for that building and considered it according to current building codes and talked to some local building professionals and just, based on current building codes and, and market demands, it's just not, staff didn't find it to be a feasible model, that, that buildings' ceiling heights are in today's, based on current building code requirements for structural requirements and other things, and then not only that, but then a demand for ceiling clearances within suites and residential units, that the initial proposal that we had recommended of the council, we didn't find could work, could, could essentially pencil and attract the type of projects to this area. And that's the end goal, is to provide a set of regulations that are workable through the design review process and are attractive enough to entice development to that area. So we are balancing those, those different-
And, and the height standard that you read, Wayne, was the dimensions of the Bartlett
The third issue I have is, can you explain on your, on the development standards that you have, you have no setbacks for the front, the interior setbacks or the side, side-street setback? Could you explain how that works with regard to the street-level open area, the fifty percent of open, your urban open area as compared to the zero setbacks that you're saying there?
Sure. So at the June third meeting, there was some question about whether there should be setback requirements in the zone, and staff had some concern, well, first, let me start by saying, in the commercial and mixed-use zoning standards across the board, there aren't any setbacks required in the zoning code. So that's something that we had considered, and often, the reason for that is, again, the design guidelines and the design review process will look at a particular site, the, what, what the nearest building is, what the, the most concerning adjacent use is, and the type of uses that's proposed, and designing a project specific to that property versus having a very fixed set of standards that are uniformly applied in all situations. So we considered that and thought that we'd be consistent with what we've been doing to date. So that's the first reason why we went with the zero-foot setbacks. The second reason is, that, that's the main reason, and then, once we had that meeting on June third, we, we heard the commission and realized that there was some need the commission had to have a minimum amount of space in between the building and the street and alleys. So we came up with this standard of fifty percent of urban open area between building facing facade, street-facing and alley-facing façades, and street-facing streets and alleys. That's how we came up with that. It's essentially a setback that's equivalent to a, where we initially came up with this, the idea was if you had a corner property and you had a five-foot setback on both street frontages, so on two street frontages, a five-foot setback, and you take that amount of area and you compare it to the size of a project, it's essentially the same, the size of a lot, sorry. It's essentially equivalent to a five-foot setback on two street frontages. And the beauty of this standard is, it allows the developer to have some larger recesses in other areas, to, to, to not have a fixed setback that's uniformly applied all the way across the property, which then cuts into the amount of floor area that a developer can have, and also reduces the flexibility for an architect to design creatively, to, with having building architecture with offsets and stuff that can go up to the property line, but then drop back, because you are cutting that floor area out already, and it provides less of an incentive to have those offsets if you're reducing the size of the project more. Does that make sense?
Do, do you think a developer that comes into town will see this, the zero setbacks, and then design something of that nature, and then come to design review, and, and he says, "Well, it says here, zero setbacks"? How, how, how would you be answering him?
Usually, they know better. Sometimes, we do get applications at the counter, it's part of the rule of people at the counter is to help the public in getting a sense of what types of projects will get approved. Sometimes, we come across projects at the counter where it's blatantly obvious, it will know, there's no way it would be supported by the planning commission. And so we try to advise them to rethink their projects, we can't make them, they want to submit a project that, that's not going to be supported, then they can do that. And based upon precedent and the types of projects that have been approved, that, that's the, that's the value of the design review process.
But the design review process can be inconsistent depending who's on the design review itself.
But the requirement here does focus, remember how we talked about requirement for open space, and we were concerned that people were counting actual interior spaces of the project? And so what this does, it moves the requirement for the open space out to the fringes of the project, so it does guarantee that there will be setbacks along the roadways, but it'll give flexibility so it isn't a prescribed five-foot setback all the way around, because we think in an urban environment that that's a better alternative. And then, in addition to that basic requirement, as a starting point, the applicant or the architect will have to design into their project because it's a requirement, you know, no way of getting around it, you have to do it, is the design review process where we may say, "Hey, you know, based on the urban streetscape here, we're gonna encourage you, or we ask you to set this back even farther along El Camino Real, because you look at the other buildings along the street, they all have that similar kind of a setback, and it's just the right thing to do." So we still have that flexibility to go above and beyond this minimum standard, but it's a good starting point, and that was at least the thought process. And our solution to the request of the planning commission, when this was previously brought up.
The, the reason I bring this up is because we've had mixed-use projects built in the last few years in San Clemente with zero setbacks in the front. And, and that's, and I know we took a field trip, walking field trip, and it was very obvious that those particular quote-unquote mixed-use projects were not really mixed-use projects. were not really mixed-use projects or successful mixed-use projects. And so I think we're trying to encourage that there are going to be setbacks so that there's a, a sense of a pedestrian-friendly atmosphere as people walk along the sidewalks. So that's, that's the point that I wanted to bring up. But I think I've talked long enough and I'll turn it over to other commissioners now.
Sal, would you like to, do you have a question?
Sure. I got a lot of questions, so. First of all, you mentioned that the driving reason to adjust the plate height and the roof height back to thirty and thirty-five is to accommodate, accommodate a mid-range parking garage access.
Yes.
The street, not El Camino Real, the side street grades varies. So on average, if you have ten to fifteen feet drop from the front to the back, somewhere, it doesn't have to be in the middle, right? It can be toward the rear. So somewhere you will find a place to accommodate the access.
Yes.
So you don't have to raise it back to accommodate, if we, let's not call it a mid-region anymore, to accommodate a garage access from the side of the street.
Well, in some lots, that, that differential between the El Camino Real and the alley is going to vary. And so in the lots where that very, that grade differential is lower, it's going to provide less options to design around. But yes, you can, you can put, you can move it, the, the access towards the back of the properties, yes.
For the very few lots, if you don't have enough height difference, then maybe on the back side, they need to cut it into the first ground to allow the ramp to drop into, drop to the subteak parking level. And they just have to do it. And that, in that case, they don't have the side garage access. And that, that depends, that's a result of the terrain.
So one of the, one of the construences is having access to both the basement level and the side entrance garage. And there's just this dynamic in development funding where, at some point, someone is not going to grade. It's just costs more than the benefits of what you get from grading down. And so it's just, it's not, when you consider all these variables, balancing this, staff recommends a two-foot taller height ceiling to work around these issues through the designer view process and not create unintended consequences by setting a limit that's lower across the board on all the properties. When the lots vary in, in their topography.
But raising the roof rates has a negative impact to the public view from the freeway
Yes.
to the ocean because according, according to the city council's direction here. And that's a very important consideration.
Yes, yes.
It's, it's in the two thousand and fourteen general plan land use element, it says to encourage horizontal and vertical, and maximize views of the Pacific Ocean while preserving public views from Interstate five. I have, I, I drove around the site on the freeway on El Camino and on the alley a few times. I have a few photos, Jim, can you put, put them on the screen?
Let me ask, are we still focused on, this is our Q and A for staff right now. And if this is part of the Q and A, then, then great. Otherwise, maybe we can preserve this until we're doing our planning commission discussion.
Oh, okay.
So it's up to you.
Commissioner Wu, I just wanted to address a couple of things. And, and great points, I think, and, and something to consider. There's a lot of different moving parts. The, the suggestion of increasing the height was in direct response to the question the planning commission said, which was, if we limit the height to thirty-three feet, which I think would help views and also would help the whole three-story component from the back, which is why we suggested it in the first place. It's still, from our analysis, definitely impacts the ability to have a second-level parking garage off of the side street. And the reason why is, and keep in mind, you can't go all the way to the back and you can't go all the way to the front because of the radius and requirements of engineering. You have to be probably at least twenty-five feet off of the radius before you can even start a curb cut. So you really only have about a fifty-foot range to move that curb cut one way or the other. And then what I think Chris mentioned in terms of the affordability of the project, as we know, as we go down into cutting into the grade, the, the price of the parking goes up exponentially. So keeping, keeping it on the second level off the side street and keeping it basically off the same alley level, that would require the higher height. And that's really all we're getting at there for your consideration. Again, there's a lot of other components to consider when you have your discussion on what is the more important for the community in terms of overall goals and what the general plan is trying to achieve. One side of the general plan is talking about ViewCorps, or another side of the general plan is talking about revitalizing an area that's been neglected for several decades in terms of new development.
I keep other part in the discussion portion, so I just ask a few other questions. There's also thirty-seven, thirty-seven feet slash forty-five feet height limit. What, what is that?
There's, there's this, currently, there's a, better put, in San Clemente, height is measured as an average height. This is the only place, well, very few exceptions to that rule. It's generally measured as an average where you're, you're measuring the height based upon, in this case, the original grade down to the grade below each development. And you're averaging what that, that, that grade is. And you're taking the difference between that and the ridge. So that's how we measure height in the city. And that's what the standard is now in the general plan. It's the, the standard you mentioned. So what we're proposing here is to have a height ceiling off El Camino Real that would extend all the way across the property. And there could be times where you'd have a building between this alley setback area and the, the El Camino Real height ceiling. Where a building could be, the grade difference is enough or the building could get to that average height limit, but it won't be able to go over the height ceiling. Is that clear?
No, it's saying, if you, if you would have measured from the alley side, those will be the maximum height?
No, but we're, we're proposing to measure it from the alley within thirty feet of the rear property line. So from thirty feet in from the rear property line to the front property line, so seventy feet usually on these properties, there's potentially an area where a building could go up to that height average, the, the height average limit. But in no way could it go over the height ceiling. So there's certain parts of the property, again, it's accounting for, we want two stories facing El Camino Real, but three stories facing the alley. So the three stories, instead of saying three stories, which we had a lot of debate on that, it's, it's defined by that height limit.
Okay, so, so, so if you measured from El Camino Real, it's thirty, thirty-five. If you measured from alley side, it's thirty-seven, forty-five, is that incorrect?
No, it's.
If you look at the elevation.
No, it's not, it's, it's, we could go back, yeah, we could go to that old graphic that would help, I think. I could probably do it.
Do it, I could.
Yeah, I think. What's this one? This is the three stories. I don't want to lose my spot. I. So using this, this graphic to help explain a little bit. So the height ceiling right here, if you're to, see, so this is the situation I was speaking of. So, so this is El Camino Real, two stories is only allowed according to our standards. And then somewhere between that, so we have a standard that says it must be two stories, at least twenty-five feet back from the front property line. That's what the standards are drafted in. So from that point back, twenty-five feet backward to where the alley setback is. So there, we're proposing an alley setback here. So between the alley setback and these, this two-story element, there's kind of like this mid-region where you could have a building element that is up to that height average, the height average limit, but cannot exceed the height ceiling above El Camino Real. If you had, so that's the main, is that clear things up before I keep going?
Commissioner Wu, it's basically, there's three standards that apply in terms of height. The most restrictive in each case applies. So that the, the thirty-five-foot height limit off of El Camino Real is a top ceiling, you can't exceed it. There's a thirty-seven-foot average height standard that we apply to all zones in the, the city. You can't exceed that either. So in the, the example on the right, you see where the blue line goes over the red, which is the absolute ceiling. That means that the red would prevail. And the example on the, the left is an example where the averaging goes below the height ceiling on the red. That means the bottom one would prevail. And then finally, if you go down to a couple more, Chris, to number eleven. And then on the back of the, the building, there would also be a height provision that requires anything over thirty-three feet in height for the first thirty feet, not exceed that particular height ceiling. So there's three things applying to these lots to ensure that it meets the city council's direction, which is two stories from the El Camino Real side and no higher than three stories from the alley side.
So thirty-seven, forty-five is for the midsection?
Yes.
Right.
And then what is the basis of your major measurement?
That's the current height. How, how, how do we measure that?
Yeah, you don't have a grade anymore.
It's measured from original grade.
From original grade?
Original grade, yes.
Okay.
Mike, did you have some questions?
Yes, I did. Chris, how are we currently addressing, just regarding height? Are we addressing architectural pertinences and other features such as HVAC, equipment, communication facilities, et cetera? How are we going to address that or are we addressing that?
Yes, yes. There is an asterisk in, one of the clarifications that we've, we're proposing is to have an asterisk in the land use table of the general plan that refers to zoning ordinance, recognizes that there are situations where components can go over the height ceilings. The height ceiling is going to be a different matter. But essentially, the zoning ordinance is going to have to look at that a little bit more when we get into the later phases. Maybe in this particular zone, there might have to be some special provisions for the height ceiling. But we are referencing the zoning code to make it clear that the general plan only provides some basis, right, some general standards for, for these matters and that there would be additional standards later on to, to clarify further.
Well, there is provisions in the code, not included in this, what we're talking about tonight, but there are provisions that allows, for instance, elevator towel, towers with a, to exceed in some zones six feet above the height limit to allow certain projections. And in other cases, conditional use permits are required in order to approve anything that might go over. And, but they would be for limited, you know, situations.
Thank you. Michael?
Yeah, I want to go over this height thing again because it, the more, the more it's explained, it seems the more elusive it is. And the, the first thing I came up with is staff wanted a twenty-eight ceiling and a thirty-three roof. Then we did a straw vote on the seventeenth. And we said twenty-eight ceiling and thirty-three roof. Now, you're, you're, you're changing what we voted on and you're raising it a couple of feet. And you're, you're basing that on this, this whole thing about access into the side of the building and it needs to be this way. And I guess the, what strikes me as an architect is, I'm not sure I totally buy that without looking at it in more detail. And if, if that really is something that we, we need to understand because you're asking us now to, to raise the height of the building. And as we raise the height of the building, we, we have the view blockages, as Sting said. And it, it, it's, it's, it's a little bit bothersome that all of a sudden this has jumped up. And, and I'm not saying I disbelieve you, but we haven't really seen the proof and the pudding on that to, to say all of a sudden we need to do that. Now, with that said, let me, let me ask another question because I'm confused about the section. Is it possible that on the backside of, of the building on the alley, that the top of the roof could exceed forty-five feet at the property line? Is it at all possible? Or is that as high as it could possibly be?
Towards El Camino Real?
No, no, on the alley, on the downside, going to the top of the roof is, when you say thirty-seven and forty-five, are you saying that it could not be from the alley any higher than forty-five feet?
Can't be higher than thirty-three feet.
Okay, so they, it's, it's, it's a little bit different because now you're saying thirty-three feet is the setback, right? You're saying.
For the first thirty feet, there's a setback of thirty feet where the height limit can't be higher than thirty-three feet.
Okay, but, all right, so.
There's three different rules. Normally, we have one.
Now, there, I'm, I'm going to go back to one other section there. The, the, the one that bothers me is the, is the one where you have a little bit more than three stories in the alley. Which one is that?
All right, you're asking what standard?
No, you have another section like that that, that has.
Well, we, we have listened to the commission and they.
No, it's not that one.
I could go, I know what slide you're speaking of is another, another night, is another night. But maybe it's this one? No, it's, it's not that one.
That one, let's, let's look at that. No, no, let's look at that. Ten, let's look at ten. That one, that's the one.
Okay.
Now, what I see there is more than three stories.
Okay.
And we're, we're talking height and we're talking language that said, we really don't want any more than three stories. And then I'm also seeing language in here that it shouldn't appear to be any higher than three stories. So my, my question is, is it conceivable that that kind of a section would be okay with your requirements that really theoretically you're, you're, you're higher than?
No, that was used to demonstrate just the idea of how you apply this midsection height limit.
So that, that's not going to occur then? We're, we're not going to look at a fractional?
The blue line governs, not the red line.
Now, to tell you the truth, I don't know if there'll be ever a situation where the midsection requirement will actually kick in. I think the other two height limits will, for the most part, prevent that from even happening. But it's there just in case. We didn't want any, we didn't want any portion of the building to exceed forty-five feet.
And, and I hate to belabor the point, but, you know, I'm, I feel very strongly about defining this as two stories in the front and no more than three in the back. And with the setback and everything, that's even better. But I just wanted to make sure that we're not having, with all of that geometry and all of that measurement, that all of a sudden now we're going to have a, a half-story or something back there higher than three.
It's going to be defined based upon the height limit that we're speaking of back here? I don't know. That graphic I had, here we go. So the, what, what it's going to be, according to the standard, is that the height cannot exceed a top roof height of thirty-three feet.
Well, that, that, that section, I think, is, is very appealing in the sense that you're, you're not going to be looking at a building that's going to appear any higher than, than three stories. That, in fact, it's a little less. So that's even better, I think, but.
These, these height limits are consistent with what we're, what we were requiring here for a two-story building. If you want to fit three stories in there or two stories, it's, what we're proposing, it's up to them. If you want to fit three stories in there or two stories, it's, what we're proposing, it's up to them. If you want to have to provide flexibility for design, you might want to have like a split-level garage.
Well, no, no, my, my point is simple. That if you're looking at the elevation, no matter how you set it back or whatever, you're only going to see three stories. And then in this case, it's even less than three stories, which is great. But that other section was a little bit more than three stories. So, you know, I'm, I'm shaving hairs here, but I'm making sure that we're not a little bit more.
We created this standard specifically for this concern. That's what this standard's all about.
My question is, we're not going to have a little bit more than three in this, right? Okay, that's all I want to hear. That's great, thank you.
You mean above ground?
Yeah, above the grade of the, above the grade of the alley, you will perceive only three stories, not more.
Correct.
Even though we say, maybe it should be, but you're using the word appear. That, that's some wordsmithing bothers me a little bit, but, but maybe that's another discussion.
If we put shall be no more than three stories, it gets us back into the issues that we discussed before where it doesn't account for the situations where you could have like a split-level garage, a basement that's partially above ground. You, it, it reduces the, the options to articulate the building. You might have some levels that aren't all, not, the plate line might not be the same.
And now you're raising that specter again, where I'm not quite sure what you're saying. You're saying that it's going to be, if you were looking at just back into the alley, is it going to be one of the two stories?
The focus has been what's visible from the alley. So that's why we came up with this standard. But staff has concerns with saying no more than three stories. Instead, staff's recommending that we limit the height and mass of the building based on a specific height limit and not, not get into a specific number of stories on the alley when things are more, there's more possibility where you, you need some flexibility on the alley side. But the mass of the building won't be more than three stories.
You know, what, what we're doing, I think, I think we're over-discussing this in point. To get back to what you said originally, the massing is designed to control the look off the alley, really to be two stories. And then, you know, because with a thirty-foot setback, you're really not going to perceive that third floor in the first thirty feet.
That doesn't bother me at all.
But your concern is it will be three stories, will look more than three stories. And, and we have designed it so it will not look more than three stories. Anything that's more than three stories will be below grade, you will not perceive it.
All right, that, that's, just trying to firm that up.
You're hearing it. That's what we're proposing.
Art, did you have a question? No? Mike?
We may have addressed this, I think I missed it. Language to the effect that the building shall not exceed three stories above grade. And then massage that out a little more. That way you can still, anything above grade is not visible. I mean, you could insert that in just to, you know, to make it a little more clear and to satisfy one or more commissioners up here. Just a thought. Because you still have that flexibility to go subterranean, right? Even if it is two more stories below grade, right? You still only see three stories above grade. Just a thought.
I, I think it's been belabored and I'll tell you what, if you had no windows on that wall, you'd have no many, no idea how many stories it was. So if we keep it to a footage height and say it's going to be thirty, thirty-five or twenty-eight, twenty-eight, that's what it is. Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, I have a, I have a question. We, back in the alley, we're saying twenty-eight, thirty-three for the plate and roof height. But on El Camino Real, we're saying two feet higher. So what's, what's the motivation for making that shorter on the alley side, even though it's, they're both two stories?
It's to account for that mid-level garage. And you're going to have a, as Jim had mentioned, that as, there's a minimum amount of separation between a curb cut and the rear property line. So as you go around, the garage is not going to be so close, it's not going to be right up to the alley. It's going to be separated so.
But we've brought, we've brought the height down in the alley, lower for those first two stories than we have on El Camino Real.
Yes.
Right? And that's for the parking? So if it were, if it were the same height as El Camino Real, that would negatively impact the parking? Is that what you're telling me?
No, we're, staff is less concerned with the height being lower adjacent to the alley.
I'm, I'm a little concerned. What if you have a flat lot? And your rear's going to have to be lowered than the front?
If it's a flat lot, then you're going to have a height ceiling that's going to go all the way across. It's going to be.
It's a two-story building.
Yep.
Exactly.
But it would be?
But it'd be thirty, thirty-five.
Yes.
At the back.
And not twenty-eight, thirty-three. So that's, that's why I'm getting confused because.
No, if you, if it's a, but in the alley, technically with this standard, you would still have to have a small step-down along the alley.
Two-foot step-down.
So you have this two-foot step-down on, so that, okay, so we're starting there then, two feet below grade?
Oh, the height above the alley.
But the step-down's going to take them below grade, is that correct?
No. So it's what you see above ground. So the height, the, the roof would drop down two feet.
So if we had a two-story building, you couldn't have a straight roof. Not that we wouldn't want a totally straight roof anyway, we'd want some variation, but, you know, speaking in theoretical blocks here, you couldn't have a straight roof. In fact, this diagram would actually be incorrect because that, because we've got these straight lines here and we're actually saying, no, that's, these aren't rectangles, that there's a kind of a slope there, right? Because we've got up to, we've got thirty, thirty-five on the right-hand side and twenty-eight, thirty-three on the left-hand side. That's, that's where I'm confused because we're saying two stories, two stories, but the foot height is different for each of them.
Yeah. And it's just a, they could be made to match if you felt more comfortable on, on either side. How many, how many lots are actually level?
None that I know of. I mean, I think this, the, the shortest grade differential is, I think, seven feet. Which is not going to probably have a basement on that one.
Was seven the average?
Seven, no. The average is about thirteen or fifteen feet. By more like thirteen feet.
What's the range? Seven to, what's the maximum?
I have all that information in here. There you go.
There we go.
It's average of thirteen feet.
If there's one, it's four.
Most of them are twelve to fifteen.
When you drew that section, what is your baseline assumption of floor height? Retail to be eighteen or floor joists to two?
Oh, wow.
The second level, ten, ten, ten-foot ceiling?
A rule.
Yeah, I can work it back.
Well, the, the Architectural Guild did a big study on that for us and gave us those heights. And that really kind of dictated some of these height limits we had on, that were being proposed on El Camino Real. And I think, Michael, would you remember those? It was fourteen and two and ten?
But are we now going to add that in or not?
Well, if it's a fourteen, two and a ten, you're talking about a twenty-six to the plate. If you have another six inches for the grade difference, it's still less than twenty-seven, less than twenty-eight. Now, if we, so it's not going to be fourteen. Fourteen for retail is very short.
It is.
I think what we accounted for roughly, since I'm going off a month ago of memory here. A lot discussed on this. It's roughly fourteen feet clear ceiling on the ground floor with two feet of, of structural space.
We had two for HVAC and two for structure.
Yeah. And then I think it was ten feet on the second level, the two feet of structure and two feet of space, which goes to thirty feet.
Where the thirty came from.
Well, well, no, if it's, if it's fourteen clear, plus two for the AC, plus another two for the structure, that gives you eighteen, plus ten for the, for the residential, that's twenty-eight to the plate, not including the grade difference between the finished floor of ground and, and the ground. It's twenty-eight.
Yeah, I.
And that's kind of where the thirty, thirty-five came from. Thirty-foot, thirty-foot plate took into account all that and gave them a little bit of latitude.
Well, the cost of latitude is if you look at the image from the highway to the ocean. Jim, can, can you put the image on, on the screen?
Your images?
Yeah. You will see that building not only blocked. It doesn't block the horizon, but it blocks much of the water. It blocks, if for the whole slew of this, this MU three-point-two zone, then all this coastline, we cannot see the white water, but we see the silhouette of the buildings in the distance. That's our coastline from the freeway view. All this line will be blocked except for the street going toward the ocean.
Why don't we, why don't we cover that when we get to the, to our discussion? Unless it's pertinent to a question that you want to ask staff right now? And if not, we'll, if there's no other question, okay, Michael?
I, I have one question and, and I just, I just, you know, these things could keep going back to the section. But on the front, you have a ceiling plate height of twenty-eight, right?
No, thirty feet. Well, we're recommending thirty, the draft ordinance is twenty-eight.
Okay, thirty, we're going back to thirty and thirty-five.
Actually, that's.
So, so what happens in the five feet from the, the plate? That I could have had a flat roof, but now I can go up five more feet. How do you count for that? What, what's going on there with that five feet?
The five feet is for the roof.
So the roof can be just sloped or something?
Yes.
And if it is, and you decided to have open timber roof, wouldn't your ceiling heights be higher then? Your plate around the edge might be low, but your ceiling height in the middle could be, could be almost thirty-three, right? Is that right? Okay.
But the idea of the plate is, it's the apparent building mass that you see. The mass up to the.
But with the slope of a roof, you could get, you could actually get more physical height on that second floor.
Correct. And with all the roof, yes.
Yeah, okay. This stuff doesn't have to always be flat roof with, you know, ducks and stuff. It can be open beam with exposed things. There's a lot of ways you can, you can increase the height, the feel of, of a building by not enclosing the interstitial space, you know?
I think what was more, most concerning to us is what you see on the outside.
Yeah, I got you.
Are there any other questions for staff at this time? No, then I will open the public hearing on this item. I do have, do I have any more cards? I've got two so far. And just to be clear, I, I will call your name, but if you were interested in one of the other sections, if you're not interested in MU three-point-two, the extended architectural overlay, or including some alleys in the architectural overlay, those are the things we'll be taking public comment on now. And then we'll take the public comment on the other items when we get to those. So the first one I have is Bill Hart. After Bill will be Michael Luna and then Zachary Gilmer.
Thank you, members of the Planning Commission, and welcome to the new members. My name is Bill Hart, former co-chair of the General Plan Advisory Committee, and I'm here in defense of the general plan. I want to make a couple of observations. And starting out with, with something that's not going to sound too nice, but we looked at El Camino Real, this section of El Camino Real, as a focus area for, for a particular reason. And that is that if you were to place it in just about any other location other than one of the more affluent areas of town, it would be considered blight. We might as well call it El Camino de Cyclone Fence. Frankly, you could drop that streetscape into Oakland, California, and it would look right at home, honestly. There are problems there. In fact, I've been in this town for, you know, more than thirty years. I have seen that area degrade. It used to be nicer than it is today. And this idealized view of San Clemente, our Spanish village by the sea, is definitely not reflected by this area of town. It has problems. Now, going back to the General Plan Advisory Committee, there was a lot of discussion about this focus area. And there was back and forth, there were compromises made. There were people with pro-growth agendas, anti-growth agendas. Not everybody got what they wanted. But the decision was made unanimously that this area would encourage development. And there were allowances made in order to, to try to make that happen. Now, I'm looking at the process right now, and I don't disagree with everything that's going on here. The two-story, three-stories, some of the height limits, whether it's, you know, and it's up at twenty-eight feet or thirty feet, you know, you can split hairs at that. But what I do see is a, is a trend here, a tendency to nip and tuck. And I think what you're losing sight of is the overall goal, and that is to encourage development. And that was a conscious decision that was made by the General Plan Advisory Committee and carried forward throughout the entire general plan process. I encourage you to keep your eye on that goal because what I see instead is you keep subtracting from that goal. And if you subtract and subtract and subtract, what we're going to get is another, another twenty years of blight along El Camino Real. And I don't want to see that, I don't think you want to see that. So please, please, keep your eye on the goal. We're trying to, to make this area nicer. Let's try to encourage people to invest in, in that area of El Camino Real and make it a, a nice mixed-use neighborhood, okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Will. Michael Luna? And after Michael will be Zachary Gilmer.
Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning Commission, welcome new members. My name is Michael Luna. I'm a local architect, resident of San Clemente, and I have my business here in town as well. I really would like to urge that we have a workshop on this subject. We've come to so many meetings here and we get limited graphics up on, on the board. And nobody fully understands really what the ramifications, how these lots really work. So first of all, I really recommend we step back, get a public workshop going on. It's not going to be a whole lot of people. I think, you know, we have a process that would really help with that and, and help us to make decisions, to understand the limitations and the opportunities of these properties. But we have to understand very quickly, clearly, that the, the placing of limit from the alley to just, oh, strict three levels is just not going to work. It's not going to achieve the goals of the general plan whatsoever. Because you want your vehicular access primarily, your commercial vehicular, vehicular access, coming off of the side streets. And when you come off the side streets, it creates a split level. The split level is occurring halfway between the El Camino Real elevation and the alley elevation. When you create a split level, and because of the clearances required for parking garages, it sends the ceiling and the floor above that, way above the El Camino Real elevation. And it also creates then a half a level that's visible from the alley. And so when you place those realities into what you're talking about, it's no longer a clear two, three-story element. I agree with staff, it should be a numerical, uh, number of feet limitation, without limitations on split levels and so forth. Determine what is an acceptable height, that is an accessible, acceptable, um, human scale from the alley and go from there. And work with feet and inches instead of number and levels because that will strip the property completely of development opportunities. So if we, we look tonight at a ten-thousand-square-foot lot scenario. And so I know that if we're forced to put all of our parking on the basement level, we will get seventeen spaces on a. we will get seventeen spaces on a 10,000-square-feet lot off the alley on a basement parking level, assuming that somebody wants to get a two-story development. And so twelve of those seventeen is going to be for commercial spaces at about 3,600 square feet. That leaves about five spaces for residential or two units. And that'll equate you into a point-six-nine floor-to-earth ratio. You've got to look at the levels on these things. You've got to look at how the parking reality comes into play on these. I really think additionally, you've got to get rid of anything other than mixed-use parking standards. Apply the mixed-use parking standards to a mixed-use use. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Zachary Gilmer. And after Zachary is Nick Buchanan.
Hello, my name is Zachary Gilmer. Thank you for your time. I agree with the, you know, having a set number for a height limit, rather than number of stories. Stories can kind of change. They could go up or down. But having a set height limit is something that I do agree with. I also would like to take a... I'll take a look at, but just mention, you know, density in the area. And, you know, as you try to increase people from the community to come out and use El Camino Real, which doesn't really happen right now. Most of the time, we walk along the alleys and go down to the beach trail. But as you do that, you know, building apartment buildings may not be... You know, you may want to consider limiting the number of units that are allowed there to avoid, say, ten, fifteen, twenty-unit apartment buildings being slammed in the south side of San Clemente. You guys are talking about incentives for new development, which I think is good. Is a tax break a possible option that would allow for the buildings to have the charm, the size? I know that for the historical society, they're allowed to have tax breaks. But, you know, if it's all about the money and we want to maintain the charm, what about having a tax break for these developers that come in and want to conform to the requirements that San Clemente is putting forward? You guys have already touched base on partial stories. I just wanted to make sure because I, too, was a bit confused. If I have a story that is showing, say, two or three feet, there's no windows, but I could look at a side plan and see a bottom level being three or four feet above grade, would that count as a story or not? Is a question I have. Okay, I guess I don't get answers. But it's a question that I have. I...
We'll answer after everyone has spoken.
Okay, that's... Okay, good. So the tax breaks, the height limits, too. Also, I have heard while I've been coming to these meetings that sometimes the planning, you know, going through the planning process, people want to see a chimney or some bell tower or something. What happens when that exceeds the height limit? Because that is likely bound to happen. And let's see here. I went around the community. I live in the southwest, and I went around the community, and there was not one person that I came across that was not for bringing things to life. However, I personally would rather see a vacant lot than an empty rundown building like you see in North Beach. Thank you.
Thank you. Nick?
Good evening, Planning Commissioners. Congratulations to the two new Planning Commissioners. Welcome. Thank you. Most of you know me. I'm a developer. I'm one of those folks that has embraced the general plans initiative. I agree with Michael's one comment, though, by the way. We've had a number of comments, you know, a lot of technical discussion about various points, some of the sort of... I don't want to use the word minutia because cumulatively they have a significant impact. But I think we'd gladly, Michael and myself or the other design folks, would gladly set up a workshop or a meeting to discuss some of the nuances of this particular area and some of the complexities on that. Interestingly enough, there is a project that is being proposed in this particular zone, which I think addresses a number of those. You know, I think you'll potentially have the opportunity to see how those work. As someone who's a resident in the city that bought a piece of property, I'm... There may be property owners that are proud of the Taco Bell and some of the other, you know, vacant gas stations and everything that are down there in South El Camino Real. But personally, I'm proud of the city. I'd love to see, you know, a little bit more down there. And if the incentive of this Planning Commission and the City Council is to act on that so-called incentive to create development down here, I'll tell you, it's really, really hard today to get projects financed. You've got to put your personal... Your balance sheet up. You've got to put up personal guarantees. There are a number of constraints. Not a lot of people are building these urban infill housing projects because they're complicated. And as I look through the... You know, what we've been doing over here over the last... What we took five years to get the general plan approved, and, you know, that was in February of last year. And then since then, we're, what, another fourteen, eighteen months since then, you know, we've been working on something. But the cut from forty-five feet down to thirty-five feet and two stories on El Camino Real, the impact that, the positive impact that did to freeway views and other specific, you know, massing concerns was a really substantial one. And as we look at a number of these other little comments in the... Well, the little things we're working through, the alley setback, you're now getting more detail on some of the, on the height limits. You know, the concern about potentially even pulling the height limits down further than thirty-five feet, not using the mixed-use parking requirement. You know, cumulatively, they're completely destroying the financial feasibility of these projects. So if the goal is ultimately to build something here and regentrify this area and build great quality buildings, quality buildings cost a hell of a lot of money. And the best real estate is the real estate with the views. And so cutting back from twenty feet to thirty feet, you're taking the highest revenue-producing real estate of the project. Parking spaces cost thirty-five, forty thousand a space. You know, so to ask us to build more parking spaces, again, impacts the feasibility of these projects. I can go through all of them. I wrote letters to the Planning Commission, both one addressing the project and one addressing tonight's general plan amendment and zoning change. Hopefully, all of you received that and have had a chance to look at that and look at the attachments. We put some graphics into that that explain some of these particular issues. And again, you know, I encourage you to stand behind the goal of the general plan, which is actually to see something nice happen down here. Thank you.
Thank you. And for the record, we did receive your communication from staff. Okay, I don't have any more cards. Is there anybody else who wants to speak to this issue? Okay, then I will close the public hearing, and we will open it up for our Planning Commission discussion. Is there maybe... I know we've got these... There are three items, twenty-two, forty-one, and twenty-nine. Twenty-nine obviously being the, you know, the most complex one. Did you want us to take some vote on twenty-two and forty-one before we get into twenty-nine? Is that your preference? Or what was your vision on how we were going to deal with these individual numbered items? Because you were talking about sort of a consent counter approach.
I think it would be beneficial to just narrow down the discussion to clarify what the commission is most concerned with and focus the discussion in that way.
Okay.
And then when there's resolution on all the items, then we can adjust the resolution as needed to reflect what the commission is supporting.
Okay. So then why don't we just go ahead and talk about item twenty-nine then, the MU three-point-two? And I know... Zao? I know you had some images that you wanted to bring up and discuss. You want us to... Is it all right with everyone we start with that? I'm sorry. Can we pause for just a moment? There were a few questions during public comment, and I should have stopped and made sure we addressed those. So just give me... Give us a couple of minutes to address those. So Chris or Jim, maybe you can... I counted four questions. Maybe you can address them as we go through them. One question was, is a tax break an option for developers to encourage development in that area? Can one of you, you can address that?
That's something that the City Council...
Well, that's a policy decision. That's not our decision.
Right, okay. I thought that was going to be the answer. But also, is a floor that's a few feet under the... Under the grade count as a full floor? I think that was one of the questions that was asked as well.
Based on the current wording of the ordinance is we are not limiting the number of stories. We're limiting the height of the building. So if you have a story that's two feet, you know, a floor that's two feet above the ground or four feet, it doesn't matter. It's whatever the height of the building is. That's the current draft. If the commission wants to amend that to have a number of stories, then figure that out.
Okay. And can one of you talk a little bit about a potential scenario when we have a tower or some element that might go in the roof over the current height limit? What does that involve?
There are zoning standards that provide allowances for certain items to go above height limits, like a chimney. And there's limits on that. So with this zone, there's new height limitations that are being considered tonight. And moving forward, there might be revisiting of those allowances when we focus on the zone in the Phase Two of this project. Maybe there's some consideration of what those allowances currently say and whether they need to be changed. If we were to go by this current draft, the existing allowances would apply.
All right. And we also had a couple of people who asked about the possibility of a workshop, a public workshop to cover this issue. Maybe, Jim, this might be a little more in your wheelhouse since you've done these. Maybe you want to take a minute and kind of describe the feasibility of that and what that might look like?
Well, that would really be up to the direction of the Planning Commission. You certainly have the ability to call a special study session or a workshop if you want to discuss the height or any other aspect about the zoning amendments or general plan amendments in greater detail. And we would take our direction from the Planning Commission. On doing that, if so directed, we would, you know, develop a workshop for, you know, whatever the direction or the goals of the commission is. It's a possibility. It would clearly delay the processing of the project, but if that's needed for the Planning Commission to make an informed decision and you feel like you want to have one, you know, so direct us.
And what's the normal timeframe for that? Is it like, you know, thirty days from inception to holding the workshop usually? Or is it a ninety-day thing or...?
No, there's no... It would just be a matter of finding a place and a space and giving enough notice to the public. It could be done in probably a two- to three-week time period, depending on the goal and how much preparation is necessary for it.
Okay, very good. Wayne, can we do... Tell us things first? Great.
Also, I wanted to mention that we have an actual movie of the whole freeway view, if you'd like to see that.
Oh, that's fine, that's fine.
Want to do that?
I'll go through this quickly.
Okay.
Yeah, if you could just open this image. This is a typical ocean view where you see the horizon, then you see the water. Then underneath the water, you have urban fabric or texture. Okay, let's go to next. This is on the freeway, looking toward the site, the Santiago site, where you can see the story pole extruding into the water. It's underneath the horizon, but it blocks the coastline. Let's go to next. This is on the same location, but on the off-ramp.
I apologize for the interruption. This is the site we're looking at and that you're making specific reference to is part of a continued item that's before the Planning Commission. I want to ask our city attorney, Mal, is it appropriate to be speaking directly to that particular site?
Mr. Vice Chair of Planning Commissioners, it's a good question. As long as we're using this as a general example regarding the impacts of the proposed MU three-point-two changes, we can do that. But it needs to only be used as a general example and not discuss any specifics as to the project that is pending before the council.
Very good. Thank you. Please continue.
And this image is from Google Earth, so it doesn't show the story pole. But it gives the idea that preferably we would like to see our project, any proposed project along El Camino Real corridor in the subject area. Beyond the roof, we'd like to see a little bit roofs and landscaping in the distance. And then you see the water and then the horizon, ideally. On the high... We can close that. We don't need that anymore. On the freeway, the ocean view opens up between Presidio to El Camino Real. The freeway goes up and down. El Camino Real is almost a flat, about, at about 230 feet above sea level. Freeway on aver... The freeway on average is about forty feet on top of El Camino Real. It could be as low as twenty-something. So if you look at the cumulative effect, if the... All the... All the site on the south of El Camino Real to be built to thirty-five feet tall, the whole coastline will be blocked. So my point is, we should try everything to keep that public view toward the ocean. We cannot get everything. So on the floor, on the horizontal side, we need to give up something. For example, we're asking for twenty percent urban open space. We already have zero setback, which is great. But we still need a... We still ask for twenty percent on the ground on El Camino side. On the half of that on El Camino side, that could be reduced. Also, on the alley side, the thirty-feet setback is excessive. And based on the... We received that image forwarded by Jim, and there's a section. It's a view... It's a sightline analysis. And that's a good example, we show it because the alley is twenty feet wide, and there's a ten-feet setback, sighted setback. If any resident standing there, looking toward our building, and we have a wall on the property line, which is twenty-eight or thirty, whatever it is, you are not going to see the top level once the top level is setback by about fifteen feet. Why need thirty? Overall, if we say the FAR, maximum FAR is 1.5, if we give them, for example, if we give them eighty percent sight coverage, two-story will give you 1.6 FAR. That's already more than the maximum FAR allowed. And then they have the third story to play with. That will give them enough room to play the architecture. So my recommendation is to keep the height low because we just talked about the baseline assumption for retail. Fourteen feet for the retail space clear to the ceiling, two feet for the air-conditioning ducts, another two feet for the structure, that's eighteen. You have another ten for the residential ceiling height, which is very good on today's market. Fourteen may not be very tall, but for the current retail space along El Camino Real, I don't see any building higher than that. So if you put fourteen there, it will be considered on the upper market. So you add all this, twenty-eight will be enough to accommodate retail space and residential space with good quality in the upper market. So in order to accommodate a possibility on the side garage access, then we raise that plate height and roof height by another two feet. That compromise the public view corridor toward the ocean. I don't think it's worth it. Every site has its unique condition, Every site has its unique condition, and it will be customized designed. Some of them, the average is fourteen feet lower than El Camino Real. So they will always have access from the alley, from the alley side. They will have, if they want a side street access, they will have it if it's fourteen. Only, only if it's less than fourteen, only if it's less than ten, I would say, then the site, the site access will be limited. In other words, you don't have that option anymore. But for the majority of the site, you will have the access from the side. But it's not going to be in the midpoint. It will be toward the alley. And we actually don't want it to be too close to the El Camino Real. First, the grade cannot drop fast enough. Secondly, there's a code requirement for any curb cut to be away from major intersection. So supposedly, alley provides the access from the behind. So when we have the side access, it needs to be close to the alley than to El Camino Real. So to summarize, I don't believe it's worthwhile to raise the plate height by two feet to accommodate any, accommodate a possible side access for very few particular sites. That's about it for me.
Okay. Wayne?
Thank you. I wanted to address Bill Hart's comments. We're all here, what we're doing is very technical right now, to say the least. But what we're here is really to create a vitality on South El Camino Real. And to do that, we really need to have retail in this area. And we want pedestrian-friendly area. We want to create retail. And what I'm seeing here is the proposal to change the three point five of the lot area versus the twenty-five percent of the building area. And to me, that is such a radical departure from what we had all been discussing before, that at this point, I'm very reluctant to vote on this project until we get some concrete examples of how that is going to change the ratio between commercial and residential. Because to me, in this area, if we have a lot of residential, we're going to have a dead area. We need to have more retail in there, we need to have more vitality in this area. That's the problem we've had before in the three examples that I've given before about our mixed use. One in Avenue de Victoria, well, two in Avenue de Victoria, and one in North El Camino Real. Each time, we've said that the design that we have there is going to provide for vitality, it's going to be commercial, and it's going to be pedestrian-friendly. Each time, we have had no success in that, in those projects. They're built up to the curb, we don't have any commercial at all. We have, in fact, offices, all offices, a retail office and real estate offices, and a massage parlor in the one in North El Camino Real. So I'm saying that it's so important for us to create that type of vitality where people in the southwest can walk up there, go to a restaurant, go to a bakery, go to a sandwich shop, or whatever, in there to have that type of vitality on South El Camino Real. And I am very concerned about this, and this is brand new, when I got this report on Thursday evening, to take a look at this and to say, well, wait a minute. This is not what we had discussed before when we're requiring, when we're talking about the minimum required commercial square feet. And taking that from the percent, the three point five percentage of the lot area down to twenty-five percent of the buildable area, that's a huge departure from what we've been talking about that before. And just bottom line to me, because I'm very bottom line in these types of things, I'm not comfortable in voting on this amendment this evening as a result of that.
I'll jump in. Just a couple of general comments. I agree very much so with the analysis of the alley view, and I've been trying to press that point that stepping back and looking up, I do believe that twenty-five feet is probably excessive. I don't think it's actually necessary for the alleys. The two-foot height limit, I'm trying to visualize, you know, a hundred, two hundred feet away, when I'm on the freeway, two feet, making a drastic difference. I mean, we were at, I think, general plan's at forty-seven feet?
Forty-five feet.
Forty-five. So I mean, we've cut it in half, or substantially in half. The other thing, we're not building or creating the vitality in this area, or any area for that matter. We're just creating the tools for investors and developers to create the vitality. If there's not a demand for it, they're not going to build it. And what we're hearing now is, we want to protect the vitality for commercial and pedestrian. That is part of our general plan. But if we press so hard to get more and more commercial that nothing gets built, I don't think that's good for the city either. I think we need to encourage getting money spent there. I'm not opposed to a study session, because I really am getting the feeling, not everyone is totally a hundred percent understanding what's going on here. So I would not be opposed to that. Some of the questions about the heights and all, maybe some graphics would help some of the people visualize better what's going on. So I love the expertise that's been brought to the table now, and I commend staff on dealing with a real tough subject. I do have to say that at the last two public hearings, the public comment, and I've held my decisions till the end, their statements about us not following the general plan was a very persuasive argument. Whether I agree with it a hundred percent or not, I'm still working on that. But they made a very good argument about that, and I do believe it's our obligation to create the tools that this area can be improved with and that developers and the city can live with. I don't think our personal opinions should dictate it, should be, you know, if we like one thing or not, we can certainly state that, but we should base our opinions on facts and what will work best for the city.
I would like to comment upon that first.
Well, okay.
And we're taking direction here from city council. City council has said to us that they want to create vitality in this area. So while we create the tools, we have to take direction from city council, which says, we want to create vitality in this area. We're not just creating tools here to design a building. We're creating tools here to go way beyond that, as far as creating a situation where it's not going to become a dead zone. And our direction from city council, our task from city council here is two stories in front, three stories in back. And from what I've heard from city council all along, and from the G-PAC, is that they want to create the type of vitality here. So what we have to do is create the tools here, not only to create the design, but to also create that. But we're not here to take a look at, which is not our purview, to take a look at the economic, economics of this. And that's what I, that's what I'm hearing here. That's not our purview, that's not our task. So when you say that it's personal views, it's not only personal views, it is direction from city council when it comes to creating an area here that is going to create that type of pedestrian-friendly atmosphere and that type of vitality that we have. And so how does that happen? It doesn't happen when we just create residential in there. It creates, it happens when we create commercial, where people can walk to and go to and create, and create that. Otherwise, what we're going to have is the same thing we have in Avenue de Victoria, with the two projects that we have there, which are dead projects, quite frankly. They're not mixed use, in a sense that they create that type of vitality and pedestrian atmosphere there. So that's what we're doing, is taking direction from city council, not only on the two stories and the three stories, but what I've heard from city council and what I hear from G-PAC as far as what our task here is. So that's, I think that's important to understand.
And I'm not saying base it on whether there's a profit made or not. I take a little bit different position.
Yes.
I have a, but I agree with you on a lot of the points. I take a position on the planning commission that I was appointed to bring my expertise to the planning commission. And I feel that the city council told us, I want you to review this, this is what we'd like to see, but give me your professional opinion and tell me what's right. And I'm not going to vote just for something because city council said, hey, we'll send it back to you, this is what we'd like to see. If I think it's wrong, I'm going to send it back to them with my recommendation, and they can change it. That's how the system's set, it's supposed to work, that they can override anything we send back.
And they have.
That's fine. But if I think it's wrong, I'm going to make sure I say so, and they understand that. Michael?
I'd like to start by saying, you know, the spirit of MU 3.2 is a good one. And I think we're all thinking it's a good one, and we're all struggling to see how we can make that work. My perspective is, right now, that we're not on any common ground at all. We're all over the map on that, makes me very uncomfortable. And it alerts me to the fact that I don't think we're there. And I think to shotgun this would not be in our best interest. I think as a commission, I think we need to kind of go back and measure the parameters of what we're trying to do here, and really fess up to the fact of what are we, what are we building here? The opportunity is that you could way overdevelop this property. That's an easy opportunity. Do we want to do that? I don't think so. We don't want to underdevelop it either. We want a balance, we want not only a balance of mixed use, because if you put five hundred square feet of commercial in one of these big buildings, you don't have mixed use, you have a condominium project with, I don't know what, a little office or something, that's what you got. And so I don't think that matches the spirit. I don't think it matches the spirit when we are directed to do simple tasks, and this is really bothering me, simple tasks of two stories in the front and three in the back. And I'm getting short-tempered by hearing, oh, it's only three, but no, it's, if it's a little below and it's up, it doesn't count. And, you know, I'm really uncomfortable. I really am uncomfortable. I don't know what we're getting, and I'll be very reluctant to want to support this now. So I, in the spirit of trying to be productive about this, I don't think we need a community workshop, but I think we might want to revisit a study session where we can, when we can put these sections on the wall, we can talk about floor area ratios, we can talk about an expectation of what do we think is a mixed use? We don't have any common ground here, we're shotgunning this, and I don't think it's right. And I also think that we're in a catch-22 in certain respects, and it's a tough call. Our new commissioner brings out a very good point about the height of this. And, you know, we had it lower, and all of a sudden, it's jumped up a little bit. And we have a hypothetical example that we've looked at before that has shown that there is impingement upon another area that we're concerned about, which is the view corridor. So there's more here than just a piece of property and a simple equation. It's a combination of things. And getting the heights right, having simple explanatory justification for how you define this, two stories in the front, three in the back, put the height limit on there, just make it simple. And I don't think we're there, and it's frustrating for me, and I think we need to do the study session. Mike?
Yes, a comment to that. Yeah, I would agree with you on that, just to make sure we're all on the same page. Simple modifications to language, like three stories or not to exceed X amount of feet can address that. But my question to Chris, has a study been done on the view shed? I mean, would two feet really make a difference here? Has any study been done along any portions of the corridor to give us that height threshold to preserve any views of the ocean? Are we just sort of assuming that? I just want to make sure there's some scientific information here that we can, going forward, that we can base our decision on. So when we're talking about reducing it even more, are we going to take away something that wouldn't make a difference anyway? Right?
I think that asking us to do a visual analysis of the whole corridor is something beyond the scope of what we ever envisioned on this project. We're setting standards for the corridor to the best of our ability with, you know, certain concerns that we've brought up tonight, which are, A, view corridor and maintaining that, and B, vitality. Two different things, sometimes don't necessarily have to be diametrically opposed to one another. I think the important thing with standards are to develop standards that you think best reflect those goals in however the commission decides to do them. And then it's up to us, through the discretionary view process, because keep in mind, every commercial project that comes in requires a discretionary permit. And in that point in time is when you evaluate with visual analysis and story poles and in-depth, you know, view of what those impacts are and how you can mitigate on each individual project. And that's where that detail belongs. I don't think that, you know, unless we want to, you know, jump into a form-based code, which no one directed us to do, do you get into that kind of analysis on that view corridor? So I just, I just don't think it's the direction we've been given to do. And there isn't any kind of study like that, other than kind of more anecdotal, you know, views of the corridor and, you know, the idea, really, to lower the height for thirty-three feet had nothing to do with protection of the view corridor. It would help, I think, I mean, at least in some cases, and some lots it might not help, and other lots it may, and other lots it probably won't make a difference, to answer your question. That reduction, I'd have more to do with the massing off the back and trying to keep it at a three-story scale and going to the city council two- and three-story requirement.
And we can, with the height, with the heights, if we, someone can come in with a plan, for instance, and correct me if I'm wrong, someone can come in with a plan and say, well, here I am at my, you know, thirty-foot plate, thirty-five-foot roof, and we look at it and we say, wait a minute, you know, yeah, you're within the envelope, but you're still in the opinion of the planning commission blocking the view corridor. That is still a finding that we can, that we can not make, and it would affect their application. So even with that building height, we have all of the, you know, right and flexibility in the world to say, you know, it's, it impinges on the view too much, right?
Certainly. And then also keep in mind that the third portion of this is developed design guidelines, where we can really spell out those, you know, things that we want to do in terms of preservation and what's important to the community. So we can take it to another level with the development of new design guidelines for this particular corridor. Looks like, you know, reading the tea leaves here, that we're looking at probably doing some kind of a study session. And what we might want to start thinking about, in addition to maybe refining, you know, the standards, is to start thinking about what maybe those design guidelines would be, and make those suggestions as part of the recommendation to the city council. We think we should do these standards in addition to make sure, you know, maybe you can do both. Maybe you can preserve the view corridor, but at the same time, allow the opportunity to get that second-level parking garage in, so it can pop up to a certain amount in certain cases with the, you know, conditional use permit or some other standard, and then still preserve the views off the freeway. But to develop those standards in a development standard, which basically is not a one, is a, you know, is not a one-size-fits-all approach. Every lot's going to be different. Ultimately, you're going to have to review these things, short of a form-based code, to look at each individual lot as it goes through the discretionary project. So we're not going to be able to answer, I mean, you hear all these things out here. Staff's not going to be able to come back with something that's going to make you guys --
Magic formula.
Yeah, magic formula. We wish we could.
What? You don't have a magic formula?
As hard as we try, I don't know if we're going to be able to do that. But I think we can maybe refine a little bit more some of these ideas that you guys are bringing out. And then maybe, I think, maybe that idea of supplementing it with design guidelines, or at least direction on for staff to come back with design guidelines at a future date, incorporating these kinds of things. And in the interim, we have that direction from the planning commission, should a project come forward in this particular area.
There's a couple of things I want to say about this. First, just to kind of continue the -- First, just to kind of continue the discussion of the view corridor issue, I can remember a couple of years ago, sitting here when we were doing the general plan, and, you know, I was very worried because, you know, I felt we were nickel-and-diming our views, you know, as they were going, you know, we were putting up a tower here and something there, and after a while they went away. The view would go away across the freeway. But the problem we had in that scenario was, a lot of these buildings were going up right next to the freeway, like, you know, the Ralph Tower, for instance. It comes up, it blocks a good chunk of what you see, you know, far beyond the horizon. You know, there's the Presbyterian Church and the Holiday Inn, places like that. We're looking here, really, this is kind of a new way of looking at view corridor protection for us. It's a much, much more fine-grained view, and that's not a bad thing. I think that's a good thing, but I want to be careful that we don't sort of throw out the baby with the bathwater, that we don't say, well, you know, difference between, say, you know, 28 and 30-foot plate height, for instance, if it's kind of, you know, an infinitesimal impact on a view of someone driving by at 60 miles an hour, you know, would we prefer to leave that flexibility, a little bit of flex room for the designer and the architect? I tend to think so, although, as Jim said, we've got to look at each of these, you know, individually and be careful about it. The reason I tend to think so is because I know in design review, for instance, we put a lot on developers in terms of, you know, moving, having movement on the roof and having movement on the facades. And, you know, an extra foot or two can give them a lot better ability to address our design concerns and make a better urban design environment, whereas if we don't do that, if we just give them sort of the dead minimum of what they can get away with, then we risk just getting a box. It says, here I am, I'm in the box, you gotta say yes, and, you know, you want me to, you know, to do some movement on the front? I can't, you know, because, you know, I'm in this box and I've got no more space to go. So, a little bit of flex, a little bit of room, I think, might be something that we want to take into account as we, you know, consider how much, you know, what this kind of fine-grained view corridor, you know, issues that we're gonna deal with. We've really only just started talking about it, so I think we're kind of in a process of beginning to create some guidance for ourselves on how we might make judgments on this kind of a thing. I'm glad Bill was here, and he brought that up. We worked together for a couple of years on the general plan. I think, you know, what you said kind of speaks to the anxiety I was having the last few weeks and the struggles I was having as I was been thinking about this. And I have worried that maybe we're, as we kind of get down into the weeds and we're talking, you know, endlessly about plate heights and, you know, things like that, that we forget that there's a reason for all this, that we risk forgetting that there's a reason for all this. And, you know, when we, really, this came before the general plan. We first started talking about something needs to be done here when we were doing the visioning process, before we even formed up the G-PAC or anything. This was identified as a focus area because it's a problem. So, it's one of the five areas in town that we focused on because of that, because either it was a problem or a particularly, you know, precious area that we wanted to make sure we preserved. So, there is a problem here that needs to be solved. There's no two ways about it. And the G-PAC, after much discussion, recommended, you know, mixed use in this way, but a little more than just, we've got to do mixed use, there was kind of a process behind it. And they, you know, and there's a reason for that and a motivation for it. We had economists there and outside consultants and, you know, our existing staff that all went into this kind of discussion to say, well, how are we gonna revitalize this area if that's a thing that we need to do? Well, this strategy of mixed use was picked because clearly just having a purely commercial area like we have now has not worked for the last 20 or 30 years. And the mixed use not only provides, the hope was, you know, hey, it provides some ready customers, but there's also the, you know, and, you know, I'm gonna get a little bit into economics here, I usually don't like to do that, but I think it's, we've got to admit that we're trying to encourage people, we're trying to make something that's financially viable enough for people to come in and build something. We're looking at the fact that these days, a lot of developers, they make their, much of their profit from the residential side of that mixed use. They make their margin as much smaller on the commercial side. I think that's a fairly, you know, common rule of thumb these days out there. So, by providing some, this incentive, we said essentially, well, you can do this third floor in the back. You can only do that third floor in the back if you provide residential. If you don't, then it's gotta be all commercial anyway. So, we're giving them that incentive as a way to pull them in and say, you know, build something here that's, you know, that you can make enough money at, that you can do particularly nice architecture and, you know, particularly good for that neighborhood. I worry that as we, you know, squeeze the height down a little bit, as we, you know, make like a 25 or a 30-foot setback, which, you know, is probably more than we need to not see that third floor from the alley, that we're sort of saying, with one hand, if you do residential, you can build a third floor in the back on the alley side. On the other hand, we're saying, well, we're gonna take away, you know, half of that third floor in our zoning ordinance. So, I start to question, well, now is that out of alignment with the general plan if we're doing something like that? Does that make our zoning ordinance not fulfill the general plan, that vision of the general plan of having this area that is with neighborhood commercial and multimodal and that sort of a thing? So, those are my concerns that I've been kind of, you know, chewing on and wrestling with, you know, this week. And I tend to agree with you two that, you know, the 30-foot setback is, you know, maybe a bridge too far. We need to bring that up. I think that if, you know, I prefer the strict height, just the height limits for just the reasons that have been made, you know, it gives more flexibility if we do a partial floor. It kind of doesn't matter because the height's the same, you know, in terms of that impact. I really like the idea of providing a set of design guidelines for this area as, you know, whatever we recommend to city council, because that gives us, starts to give us some flexibility to say, hey, you know, here's your envelope, now here's the design guidelines, we're gonna hold you to these. You know, we've got problems, but let's not us try to solve those problems up here on the dais. Let's have the architects and the designers and the developers solve those problems, and here's our design guidelines that are gonna tell us what that solution's gonna look like, or give us guidance on making that solution. So, I think that would be a nice addendum to this, and I hear there's a new kid on design review who might have something to say about that, too, so. But that's my basic feeling about it. I wouldn't mind another study session. I know we've gone through this a lot, but if there's still not quite clarity on it, plus we have a couple of new members who are just, you know, stepping into it knee-deep on their first night, I have a lot of sympathy for them. So, that might help with a little catch-up, so I wouldn't be opposed to that, you know, either. But I think part of that, that study session should be maybe a bit of a nod towards some potential good design guidelines that we do for that, and maybe also a bit of a discussion on some of this fine-grained view corridor management, you know, and how much we maybe should or shouldn't do that, because this is the first place that we're seeing that. Michael?
You know, you're saying a lot of good things, and I think what you're saying is, we're darn close. We're really close, and we've got some couple of new people, we've got some wrinkles in this thing, and we don't want to throw the baby out in the bathwater. I don't think we want to do that. But I think we're just not there yet, you know, and I think a study session and a review and let each individual commissioner get their angst out, get in what they want, let's see how we can get everybody on the same page. I think it's worth it. This is an important, a very important thing that we're doing. And, you know, some of the other zoning, we're not beating it over the head like this. I mean, we're rolling with it. It's simple. All of a sudden, this particular mixed-use zoning and this particular thing is a really focused concern by all of us. I think we're all concerned that we want to do the right thing. So, I agree with the spirit of, you know, let's make this thing happen, but I don't think one more study session would hurt at all, and I'd like to see a little bit more common ground.
Jim, I have a suggestion also. I think it's important for us to really understand what mixed use is. I think we've been very technical about what we've been talking about here, but really, what is mixed use? And I think we need to really, in our study session, talk about what is mixed use. And there's some wonderful articles out there that can be provided to all of us to talk about what is mixed use, because that's what we're trying to do here. We're not trying to make it all residential, we're not trying to make it all commercial, we're trying to make it a blend of both. And so, that's, and a vitality out there. So, that's, I think, important to understand.
So, what I'm starting to hear, and you guys, of course, correct me if I'm hearing wrong, is that there's an interest in taking this item, this Part 1 item that we're on, and having a study session on it in the near future, where we talk about, you know, get some clarity and maybe a little more imagery, a little more concrete stuff on, you know, what these heights look like in the different circumstances. What is mixed use, maybe perhaps a better definition or some clarity for us on that? Some information on potential design guidelines that we might propose for this area, and maybe a discussion on fine-grained, on how to address dealing with more fine-grained issues in the view corridor. Does that sound reasonable to people? Is there...
It sounds very reasonable to me. Was G-PAC presented with any PowerPoint points or anything on, from the planning group that did the general plan on mixed use? Remember any?
It's been a few years now. We did talk about what is mixed use. Maybe there's something there in the old records or something, you know, I'm sure we got some kind of an overview, so...
We did have notes, actually. We kept notes on each session, but especially on this particular session, G-PAC does have notes.
So, maybe we can bring those in as part of our packet on that one.
Yeah, I was hoping for a graphic presentation of successful projects. That's what would really show what it is.
That would be good.
Yeah, I do know that Charles wrote that there were notes taken for each G-PAC meeting that we could get copies of, you know, to provide, but I don't recall much in terms of the way of graphics.
Okay.
Well, look...
Maybe we can pull up, if there was some text from there in the minutes or something of that, or some document they provided, we could include that in the packet with that study session.
So, what was the first point again?
It's kind of a lot for a study session, now that I'm kind of going through it. I said, the first, I think the first thing I mentioned was a little more clarity on the, maybe some more specific examples of the, what these buildings might look like in MU 3.2. Design guidelines was another one, it was a separate one.
One thing that I have in mind, if you could tell me what your thoughts are, is looking at the most, maybe a range of these lots, the lots with the less grade difference and the more significant grade difference, but actually more focused on the mid-level lots.
I think that's a good idea.
And smaller size to understand where the constraints are and then how to work with that. Because that's, I think, my understanding is part of the confusion is, what are these constraints that we're trying to work around? Is that correct?
I'd agree. You pick a baseline sample for average condition, and then see how far the real condition will deviate from there. Have a baseline.
It looked like out of the dozen or so, there were probably, you know, eight of them that were within, the slope was within a few feet of each other, so maybe starting with that.
What would really help is for us to have a field trip to some cities that have successful mixed use. Now, there are some cities that are gonna have mixed use that are going to be much larger than we would anticipate here, and there are some that would be more reasonable as far as size and so forth. But we can talk all day about plate height and top of roof, view corridor and all of that, but until we actually go and take a look at some of these successful mixed-use projects in other coastal cities, I think that's invaluable, and I think it's something for us to really consider. And Sanitas, for example, Del Mar, there's mixed use in Oceanside, I would not recommend that, but there's mixed use in Oceanside. So, we have examples of mixed use that have been successful to varying degrees in other cities. And I think we got to wrap ourselves around this mixed-use concept, because we're, thus far, we're being very narrowly focused on the technical aspects of this, which is fine. But what our task here is, is mixed use. So, it's something to think about there. I know we can't make a decision this evening about that, but it's, I think it's so invaluable to take a look at successful, actual successful, mixed-use projects.
Michael?
Commissioner Roulin, you asked the question. You said, the last thing you said is, I think a study session might help, and I'm gonna say, I agree with you. In the spirit of moving this along, I would suggest that we continue this item, figure out what we're gonna do, if we're gonna do field trips or do a study session or have the planning staff give us a little bit more concrete examples, make us feel, whatever that is, I agree, a study session, let's just, let's keep this moving in the right direction, that's all.
So, it sounds like if there's a desire to continue, we'll need a motion for that for this particular item. Well, this is part, but this is part of the agenda item. Well, it's almost 10 o'clock. To continue the whole thing, we should probably have Don back, but we, I imagine we also need a motion regarding a study session to direct staff. Do we need a motion for that, to give you that direction?
Well, we still have the balance of the zoning amendment to talk about, and there were the two, I'd like to get some, at least, resolution on the other two components of this MU 3.2. If we can put that to rest, that would be nice.
Okay. Well, then, let's do this, let's...
And at the very end of the meeting, when Don comes back, we can continue it, and the thing is, I don't know if we can really continue it, because we don't have any idea of how long it's gonna take to put a study session together for you. It might be, I would have suggested a special study session, that we just have this topic alone and not put it with a, like, our next agenda, for instance, for the upcoming planning commission is pretty full as it is, so I don't think a study session would be very valuable in that meeting, because it's just not enough time.
Frankly, I think it might be more advantageous to do, in my opinion, a workshop than a study session. A study session's gonna be like this. If you want to get in there and draw on a table and mark things up and talk to other people besides just staff, then it's more challenging. That's the trade-off for the workshop versus the study session.
I like the idea of a workshop also. The guild can come and make their pitch and probably more expertise that way. Not saying staff isn't art experts.
That's my recommendation personally.
I'm just thinking back about workshops and who really directs the workshops. Who's the workshop director? The planning commission or is that city council? City council for planning commission workshops.
I suspect Jim will be the moderator.
Well, workshops...
Could you push a button?
...moderator per se.
Not a moderator per se, but I must say that when we had the issue with the signage at Marblehead, the planning commission was directed by city council for a workshop. And so, I don't know if the planning commission can really make that type of decision on themselves for that, but maybe we can talk to Mal here about it.
Yeah, I see what Mal says, but I don't think that there's, you know, as the planning commission, in order to work out, you know, a solution for this particular problem and come up with the best, you know, recommendation, you're, you know, welcome to direct staff to do whatever you'd like. I don't think you need to have it initiated by city council. City council already initiated this process. So, whether we call it a study session, a working study session or a workshop, I don't think it really matters. I think that we're trying to work out, you know, what we want to do in terms of a recommendation to city council for this particular MU 3.2 zone.
So, just for my own clarification, so we're gonna talk about, we're gonna continue discussions on whether or not the 3.2 component, so three stories and two stories, as staff has presented to us, will work, and what mixed use really is, whether or not we can get, be successful with this type of use within this envelope, without knowing exactly what proposals are coming to the table, what those mixed-use proposals will look like, what degrees of residential or commercial retail will be contained with each proposal, we don't know. commercial retail will be contained with each proposal, we don't know. So we're really talking about three stories and two stories, whether or not it's going to work along this corridor. And we're going to really delve into what mixed use really is and if it will work within this envelope, if that's what we're talking about.
I think it's more the mixed use issue. The height and all, I think we've, is not really what we're having problems with. We're having to figure how much of each.
That's fine.
So we could, we could put that to rest. We could put that piece to rest anyway, the 3-2 tonight, possibly?
Well, when you say 3-2, it's not three stories from El Camino Real. It's two stories from El Camino Real and three from the alleyway. Okay.
One question I have is, the general plan outlines mixed use for this area. It already does. So when we talk about what is mixed use and would it work for this area, that's a much broader discussion than what we're having right now. Right now, we're just talking about what the standard should be, not whether, what the use should be. And so I want to be clear, if we're going to have a study session or workshop, to get a little direction, because I'm, we're going to be preparing things for you, and I don't want to beat into anything. I just want to help refine a little bit what we are tasked with. We are tasked with just the standards.
What I was hearing was that we need, the commission feels it needs a little more information on what is mixed use? What makes successful mixed use? Because the general plan says this is going to be mixed use, so we're, you know, we're locked into that. So, so that we can understand, you know, you know, the heights and, you know, how big something needs to be and, you know, what should the floor area ratio be? And that, that's kind of what I was hearing from people, so...
And again, I think if we want to really understand mixed use, we're not going to understand it with a workshop or another study session perhaps. We really need to see what it looks like in other cities, whether we do that individually or as a group. We need to take a look at that. For example, in Encinitas. Encinitas has some very good, successful mixed use. Now, it's larger than what we are going to be proposing for South El Camino Real. Del Mar has some very successful mixed use. So these are things that we really need to physically look at because we've really missed that. We, again, you say we're tasked with standards. We are tasked with standards, but beyond that, I think it's important for us to really understand this concept more so that we can come to these conclusions because we're all going off in some different directions here. And I think it's important for us to have a better grasp of that. So whether we do that individually or as a group, that's, that's my thoughts.
All right. So again, what I, what I have is, what we, what we're looking at, we'd like to cover is a little more clarity on, on sort of the standard or the average or a couple of little more concrete examples on what something might look like in this area.
The baseline.
The baseline kind of thing.
Set of constraints to it.
Yeah. And, you know, a little more clarity on what makes successful mixed use, some, you know, an outline or some potential ideas for design guidelines for MU 3.2. And maybe a discussion on, something on the view corridor and kind of the different way that we're looking at protecting the view corridor in this fine-grained way. So is there any motion regarding having a workshop-y, study session-y kind of thing?
I would like to chime in on that. I, I think a workshop is premature, and I'm not sure it's the right idea because it's agendas that will come, development agendas that'll come. What I've heard, though, that it sounds interesting to me, is that there's some background from the G-PAC study here about what mixed use is, and that's available. I'd like to, I'd like to know what that is. I'd like to hear what that's all about so that we're at least on, on that page. And so to simplify this, I think we need a study session to figure out where we're going to go, and then if we decide that we do a workshop or we do a field trip, that we come out of that study session with a plan. And, and don't just get there without giving it a little bit more thought, because we're all over the place here. And, you know, I don't want to all of a sudden go, well, gee, let's, let's approve the height thing, let's get that done. Well, no, I don't think so. I think we want to, we want to do this right and figure out what it's going to take. I think we just have to sort of figure out how we can agree on some of this stuff, and maybe it's going to be easier than we think. But if we don't know what mixed use is, if we're all really saying we don't understand what mixed use is, and the G-PAC is the definition or whatever they have, I'd sure like to see that. I'd like to see that because that's what they, that's what they were tasked to do. And I want, I want to be able to follow G-PAC, I want to be able to follow the City Council directions, I want to follow the spirit of this thing, I want to do it right. So that's probably my last chime in on that.
So is there a motion?
I motion that we continue this item predicated on a study session in the near future, arranged and planned by the planning staff.
I'm just, I'm just wondering, because this item is 8C, and we're actually just doing one part of 8C. If we want to continue this, I think maybe even good to have Don come back.
Well, I'll say, to be specific, let's, we're talking about 8C. I don't want to rule out the other possibilities if we can, if we can get that handled tonight.
So, well, you're not talking about 8C, you're talking about this, this...
I'm talking about MU 3.2.
Right, this category one that we're focused on right now.
Well, don't we just need to give staff direction to prepare a study session to address the issues that have just been discussed?
Design, mixed use.
Yeah, that's what we're going to do. And we'll, we heard a lot of your input.
Doesn't have to be a motion.
We'll try and make the best sense of it as we can. We'll come back for the study session. We'll probably give some examples of good places to go see. I know of a few in Encinitas as well, maybe the same ones Wayne's talking about. And then we'll set up a time. We're, we're going to have a hard time, we'll probably have to continue this item to a date uncertain because we don't know how long it's going to take to put this together.
Okay.
Okay.
And then for Mal, do we need, or can we take Part One amendments of what's in front of us tonight and put those on hold and still take action on all the other resolutions?
Sure.
And what would we do here? Would it be to a date uncertain? Or do we want to close it or table it? What do we want to do here?
Mr. Vice Chair and Commissioners, yeah, the proper approach procedurally would, would be to table it and renotice this item of the public hearing for a future date. If we're going to really have a study session or a workshop or a workshop session or a study workshop, whatever you want to call it, that's, that's going to put an end to this part of the hearing, and we'll just renotice it for a future date once that, once that time comes. So at this point, if the commission's wish is to, is to agendize a future meeting where we discuss these things in more detail in a less formal, non-hearing setting, it's a matter of giving direction to staff to do that, I believe that, that it's clear as what the commission wants. Once, once that has been done, a month from now, and once, once staff has their direction, we can then renotice public hearing for this aspect.
Before we table that, I have a quick question for Chris. Do we get credit for street parking here?
No. No, in the downtown, there's a parking standard based on street parking.
I understand we had a vote on that to use the typical parking requirement for this MU 3.2. And that's not, and that's not, it's a straw vote.
It's not official.
It's not official. Okay.
I will propose that we table Resolution PC 15024, Part One Amendments, till a future date.
Sir?
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes 6-0 on abstention, and we can finally bring Don back out of the penalty box.
Are we moving to Part Two?
Yes.
I need to recuse myself because I live within 500 feet from the, from the area to be discussed.
Before Don comes back on the podium, is there an interest in a five-minute break?
Good morning, Don.
Yeah, five-minute break, everyone.
Mr. Vice Chair? Before we break, Commissioner Brown comes back in.
Yes.
Which means that he should go back out right now. Thank you. I believe that for MU 3.2, we actually have, we have two resolutions that are in play. Yeah, there's, there's 15-028 Attachment 11 and 15-029 Attachment 12.
Very good, thanks for catching that.
Both of those should be tabled to a future date uncertain. So if you want to change your...
Well, I'll do a second motion.
That's perfect.
I'll do a second motion.
And, excuse me, I'll let, I could point out that Commissioner Wu has stepped out, so...
It's okay.
That we table Resolution PC 15024, zoning Part One Amendments, Attachment 12, till a future date.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes 502. And we're on break for five minutes.
I've got, I've got to get some stuffy. Yeah, I've got to get back and do some... Actually, what I'm seeing though is I'm actually seeing some of this, and you're not too far from it. And, yeah, it's probably better to be quiet. Yeah, it's not a lot. Yeah, it's not a lot. So, all right.
[inaudible]
I don't know if I can see you all.
Oh.
Yeah. Where's all y'all?
All you? That's all we need, that's all we need, that's all we need.
Yeah, we're playing.
I need six more seconds. Arthur goes and goes and goes. She really did it. She has a justice. She's a woman. A lot of personal tests.
One thing knocked out.
Eleven or fourteen.
Probably eleven dash.
Eleven or fourteen.
On the briefing. Part two. Of the original briefing.
Eleven or fourteen, I guess.
Of the staff report. Whip pass to Edelson to beat that down.
I heard that.
Okay. Me.
I am a contractor, so I can use two. Must be doing better.
I moved three weeks ago.
Normally, Julia always brought a little bag. We wait for him to... Should we just start the meeting without him? Let's go start the meeting without him. Call the meeting back in session, please. And with that, thank you very much for taking care of things while I was away. We will now start with Part Two of the, the staff brief. South El Comino Real changes east of I-5, the NC 1.3 zone.
Good evening, Chair. Welcome back, Commissioners.
Thank you.
This item, Part Two of this discussion, is regarding zoning amendment 52 in your table and maps. So it's just the zoning changes map, because it's just a zoning change. And in particular, I have a map here, I can show you.
This is Part Two, South El Comino Real changes in that.
Three cues in this. Yeah. Okay.
No, I'm not kidding. You took your money? You took my money? No, 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 no. Oh, no, I would...
I call the complaint.
I'm just showing you what I got.
So 52, there's these two lots, right here. And you can see the shading of these lots, it goes beyond this more continuous line that goes down. It's because the extent of these lots, it goes beyond that. And the general plan, it changed the, the portion of the properties beyond that to be NC 1.3. So here, I have a comparison here, you'll see, you'll, you'll make more sense when you look at this. So if you look at this, see how there's a parking area here, and I think it's this lot, too. But the, but these two properties, when you look at it this way, the zoning line goes through the middle of these two lots. And so staff's recommending a zone change that would move the limits of that zone boundary to follow where the general plan has the commercial zone. That's all we're recommending on this. No change in standards, it's just to follow the general plan. Correct.
Move the boundary on the, on the, on this matrix chart. It follows the map.
Item 52.
Item 52, which reads, proposed changes, one, move the boundary of the neighborhood commercial zone so that the lot is owned entirely commercial, and rename the zone as neighborhood commercial NC 1.3 to reflect general plan designation.
So during the recess, staff had discussed the, the project a little bit, and what we're recommending now, based on Part One, is for the, the commission to take a straw vote on Part Two and Part Three to provide direction. The discussion was...
A straw vote?
Yeah, a straw vote versus a, a formal final decision on those items, because what we're, what we're expecting to do here is to hold on the, the entire balance of all the items until everything is ready to move forward.
Okay.
And it's just clear for the record to have everything together. So if you could give us direction, it's still helpful.
Okay. So what you're proposing, you want us to just go into discussion on this and see if we agree with, agree with it, have a straw vote, and then continue it?
Yes.
To...
Are we tabling it, or?
Or table it?
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, we would be tabling this. And then it would, it would all be re-noticed as soon as the, the MU 3.2 is figured out as one complete package.
Okay.
And it would go up as it can be packaged to the councils opposed to in three different sections at different times.
Okay, so that's, so staff's briefing is concluded? Is this correct? That's all, you want a straw vote on?
Yes, that concludes this.
Should I open it up to per public comment, then? And then we'll get into discussion to give you that. Any, any cards, Eileen, or is there anybody from the, from the audience who'd like to comment on that? I'll close the public comment and invite discussion or a straw vote, and the straw vote recommendation is to, to give staff direction on this. My personal feeling, I have no objection, I think this is well-founded, it's a smart move, it's just a realignment of a zone line, and this is the power of the GIS, so I would, I would suggest that we say, in, in a straw vote sense, approve this resolution for, it's actually in the zone, it's a zoning amendment and renaming of the NC 2 zone to NC 1.2. And is there any concurrence with this?
Yeah, I, I, unless someone wants to discuss it, I will move that we take a straw vote directing, indicating to staff that the planning commission is in agreement with the resolutions and attachments 13 and 14.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So let's take care of Part Two, is that correct? Now...
We can bring...
He went, but he went in there. Now, we have to make sure that that is continued to table.
It's just, yeah, it's just tabled, but one, one point of clarification, the motion was for...
Just...
13 and 14, but 14, I believe, is in Part Three?
Yeah.
And only 13 is...
14 is in Part Three, I'm sorry.
We're only, we're only approving PC Resolution 15030.
Yeah, it's just, just, just Attachment 13. Is that, is that correct?
Oh, I'm sorry.
You stated 13 and 14, I just, I just want a clarification.
Oh, that's because it's only a zoning change, I'm sorry, I was thinking zoning and general plan, I apologize.
So just 13 for the record?
Yeah, for the record, that was just 13.
Thank you.
Okay.
Attachment 13.
Okay, so we, we have him back, and now we can continue on to Part Three, South El Comino Real changes east of I-5, the NC 1.3 zone.
Yes, good evening, Chair. Includes several items on page 11, the bottom right corner of the board, that everyone... It's page 11, it has a list of the more substantive changes that are part of Part Three. If you recall, on April 22nd, there were two straw votes taken regarding properties on Avenue Gernada. So what I, why don't I do this, I have a map, but most of the discussion is on the general plan. So it's these properties here on Avenue Gernada, where they're predominantly developed as residential use. We received comments for the April 22nd meeting from residents that has desire to remodel or rebuild their residence, but right now it's a prohibited use to have residential standalone use. So the, the commission supported at that time for staff to think of some options here to allow standalone residential uses so that residents there could use such work on their properties. And there are a couple of other options, what we're recommending is establishment of a mixed-use 3.3 zone. Sorry. That's okay. Do you need to go back?
No.
So the mixed-use 3.3 zone is identical in terms of development standards as the, the zone that had existed before. It's the mixed-use 3.0 with the more restrictive two-story height limitation that was discussed during the general plan. So the downtown core standards, everything would be the same. The only exception to that is that standalone residential uses would be allowed on those properties. So to separate it out, we created a new land use designation. So that's the first item I want to talk about. The second item, there's these properties here, we talked about on 44, where they do not front El Comino Real, they front Los Molinos. And in the general plan to date, it's included those in the architectural overlay and the pedestrian overlay, and the commission supported the idea of removing those overlay zones to be consistent with the character of the overlay through El Comino Real, so the properties that front El Comino Real.
But for, for the two new commissioners, though, the previous commission, the, those of us remaining from before had already concurred with that, with this particular change, with a straw, series of straw votes earlier, in an earlier meeting. So, to make it more compatible. Okay, continue, Chris.
So the third item on this list is related to the properties that are designated as MU 3.1 in North Beach. And you could see right here, it's calling out 36, right here. Six, and it goes further north. And those properties were not, the council did not direct staff to allow standalone residential uses. The mixed-use 3.3, 3.1 lots outside of the downtown core are the areas where staff was directed to allow standalone residential uses. So other changes are proposed where we're, where the council supported the idea of eliminating mixed use over here in El Portel, if you remember those?
Mm-hmm, right.
Okay, well, that was the mixed-use one zone, mixed-use one designation.
Right.
So when you eliminate that, there's no mixed-use one anymore, there's mixed-use two and on. And what we're, what we're trying to do is more of a clarification, to distinguish these lots here, all the same development standards, the same idea, the only thing that's different is you can't have standalone residential uses. You would create a mixed-use one designation to distinguish the two areas, North Beach from downtown.
Okay, but this is to, to allow standalone or not allow standalone?
It's just to basically change the name.
Okay.
I just want you to kind of get a feel for what we're trying to do here, it's a clarification.
You're saying it's just a name change and not a restriction, that you can't do standalone residential?
You currently can't do standalone residential. We're only talking about these lots.
But would this, would this allow standalone residential in the mixed-use area or not?
No.
No, okay, okay.
Or, and that's the, that's the point, we're trying to make it clear that it's not allowed.
Right.
So you don't confuse the area downtown from the area.
Where it is allowed.
Yes, that's the goal.
That's a good separation, that makes it simple.
Plus, then we have mixed-use one again. Fourth item on this list is related to Marblehead Coastal and the Plaza San Clemente site. Current win, the general plan didn't update the regional commercial standards to account for a change to the hospital designation from one to another. And the only regional commercial designation now is Plaza San Clemente. The specific plan limits the floor area ratio or density to .35 of the site plan, the commercial site plan. And right now, if you go and you look at the, the previous general plan and following that, the floor area ratio for regional commercials is .5. Specific plan is .35 for the project area. So we're recommending to reflect what the specific plan allows.
Okay, so bring the general plan in conformity with the specific plan.
Make them consistent with each other.
And also, because that's the way it was developed out and approved.
Yeah.
So we don't want to increase the density of the, the outlet mall any more than it already is.
And indirectly, that weighs into our environmental review, you know, we're technically reducing the, the maximum allowable density that was modeled in the general plan, and so there's, in a bigger context, it has... It helps to, to allow some of the other changes that are included.
Yeah, along with traffic and mobility and all sorts of things.
Yes. So that's that item. The fifth item is a height requirement change for the properties in the purable area. At the April 22nd meeting.
Close your eyes till it gets to your vertigo.
There we go.
There we go.
Okay, so these properties, 28, the city council wanted to change this from mixed-use four to reach residential high density. High density. High density residential. Right. High density residential has a higher height limit than the mixed-use four zone. So we're proposing a special height standard to maintain the height that was accounted for in the general plan. Which is? 30 feet. Instead of 45 feet that's allowed in... Right. Residential high density zones.
And these built? These are currently 30 feet.
Correct.
Right.
We, we, I, in the audience, there's a member of the public that had asked about this, that's prompted this, is, wait, when does this change increase the height limit essentially of these properties, if you go to reach... High density. High density residential. So we're addressing that. Yes. You better believe it.
Okay.
That kind of makes sense to me in a way, I don't know, but some of the other commissioners would just keep it as it is by, by, by creating a special zone for it.
Right.
Yeah.
No, look, it's going to be 30 feet, is that correct? Not 45 feet?
Right. He's proposing to keep the height limit at the mixed-use level, limit of 30.
30.
Because when we, when the council removed this from mixed use and said residential high, now you would, could increase it to 45.
Right.
So what the staff is suggesting is a special zoning amendment that says, okay, it's residential high, but it's a 30-foot limitation.
Right.
I, I think would calm the waters down there considerably.
Yes.
Because a good neighbor, Edelson, who lives up the street, would get a lot of tomatoes on his door or something like that, whatever.
But it's beyond my 500-foot limit. It is, it's outside the 500 feet, staff checked. So the, this last item on this list, and there's several others, but I'm pulling out the most significant changes here. This is a staff recommendation to include these alleys here, 40 and 41, down El Comino Real, then South El Comino Real, into the architectural overlay, and then there's the storm channel. The storm water channel, is to include that in pedestrian and architectural overlay.
Do those alleys go all the way down to, like Valencia? How, how do they extend? Go to the right? Yeah, all the way?
Yeah, pretty much all the way.
So we would be saying anything done in the alleys, Spanish call it a revival?
Not all the alleys, there's very few exceptions. For, do you want an exception to get a feel for our rationale?
Yeah, yeah.
So right here, we were talking before about not including this area in the architectural overlay, because it doesn't front El Comino Real. That's Los Molinos. Correct. There's an alley between the properties.
Oh, but it's not the main, it's not the, what they call the paseo, it's not that west side alley.
No, it's, it's, that's Los Molinos.
Goes by little pages and up the back towards, that's actually a street, I think, isn't it, a street named... Goes by little pages and up the back, uh, towards, that's actually a street, I think, isn't there a street name to it?
So we're not recommending that alley be included.
Okay, but it brings our alleys into an overlay because they're, because they look so terrible anyway. We, we put them in, in some sort of design guideline.
Quote-unquote mural area.
Well, what about, well.
They've been in, uh, in Never Never Land for the last twenty-five or thirty years from, from many aspects, so I think this is a good move, personally.
You bring up a good, yeah, you know, you're kind of joking a little bit, but I know, uh, you bring up a good point with the murals. There's, in that alley in Los Molinos, there are portions of it that you can see, clearly see from El Camino Real, and El Camino Real's an architectural overlay. So it, it begs the question of, you know, if, you know, if you can see it right there, if it's prominent on El Camino, you know, you could, if, if it features prominently on El Camino Real, even though it's not on El Camino Real, how do we do with that? Is it considered part of the architectural overlay, is it not? So, uh.
Well, the murals aren't in the overlay.
No, they're, no.
Or in the alley, they're on the buildings and, which would be in Los Molinos.
Oh, that's true, yeah, they're on the building and not the alley, I guess. Well, the building faces the alley, so it gets a little confusing. So if we have an art, what does that mean then for an architectural overlay? If I, if, if someone is, does a fifty percent improvement on their property and they're facing an alley, don't they have to make that then Spanish Corner Revival?
The main motivation for this is this idea of having an alley in the future or one of the directions of the general plan is to have alley design standards, design guidelines.
Does that, does that apply to the buildings that face the alley or, or have a wall on the alley? Would that affect those buildings or you're only talking about like the street itself and the?
Just the alley.
Ah, okay. So just the alley and things like street furniture and right away, lights, okay. Okay, but it stops right at the property line then, okay?
Okay, now that, it kind of brings the alleys out of the cold, I would think, which we need to do. I mean, put some, they've been neglected, they were never part of the street and the best improvement program or anything like that. So I think it's, I think it's a smart move.
And with that, there's other items I can discuss if you have any particular concerns.
I, I actually have a quick question back on number one, this MU three-point-three standard. I just want to make sure that only covers existing standalone residential. All of the lots that you indicated for MU three-point-three, those are all existing standalone residential, is that correct?
There's a parking lot, there's a couple of exceptions where they're not developed as a residence.
So residence or undeveloped or a parking lot.
If someone were, let's, let's take most extreme case scenario, let's say there's a commercial building there, one of those lots, they get tear it down and put a residential building on it.
Yeah, that's, that's what I'm asking is, you know, and I'm not sure we want, we want to. The point of this is to allow those residences. When they came up and spoke to us, the point of this, as I understand it, was, is that those residents, you know, that they, that they could, you know, make, make improvements to their home and that sort of thing. So, you know, that's the reason to change this zoning. So I wouldn't want us to kind of let, uh, have the unintended consequence of if someone has a commercial and they convert it to residential when that's not what our intention was. So I just want to make sure that, that everything that's currently there is residential or undeveloped.
We would have to make a change if that's the commission's intent, is to make clear that it's only existing residential uses that can maintain.
Could you go back to that map there, it's item with, uh, number thirty-eight? So, yeah, we don't want to, that's, that's a concern in a way. Number thirty-eight, right?
Think at the time, like.
I mean, it was, it was a couple of homeowners who came in, and now what I'm seeing here is, you know, whatever, eight, eight or ten lots. So that's, that's kind of what's, why I'm bringing that up, if, 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 if that's the purpose of it, to kind of protect those homeowners.
I, I, I don't know of any commercial on those lots of thirty-eight.
I, I don't either, but I'm asking to make sure.
They're all residential.
If that's, if that's it and that's our intent, then.
Yeah, and I think that it's, not only is it residential, it's also residential on the other side of the street and the whole character there, if you put a mixed-use, use within that block right there, it would be completely out of character.
Totally.
You couldn't park it either.
No.
So, um, that's why we recommended the change.
Right.
And we do have actually one of the property owners sitting in the audience here.
Okay, so we're comfortable with it, it's all residential and, uh.
I don't know of any commercial there.
I don't know either, that, that far down.
I, um, is that in Abitida del Mar, the, the big lot right behind the thirty-eight, is that the empty lot?
Yes. Yeah.
So then I would imagine that out at the end of the purple to the right, that L building, that L lot is the Bertha Henrys.
Yes.
Right?
Yes, that's Bertha's.
So from there down, there's no commercial building.
Right. It's all residential.
Yes.
Yeah, but that's Bertha's, old Bertha Henrys.
I know the number there, but I, for the shape of the lot, I would, I, I think it's Bertha Henrys.
Right, that, the L shape, that, that, that one L area there is in fact parking.
Yes, yes.
Yes. Okay.
But it's outside our zone of consideration.
Right.
And, and I went and I took a look at pictures of the area and whatnot to try to define these limits, but I, I just.
It's, it's residential, believe me.
Yes, it, it is all residential, it's not a parking.
Yeah, right.
Two parking, two parking spaces and everything else is residential.
Right. Okay. Shall we move forward?
Is there any, uh, let's see, um. That pretty well concludes your briefing then?
That concludes my briefing.
There were, there were some other issues there, like the zone, the noise and the noise overlays. I guess we're just making the EIR whole by putting the future noise level in there, it was not a, not a big, big deal. And the new planning area charts for Planning Area Five and Planning Area Eight, I thought were very illuminating.
Does that increase the noise level?
It's the contour line charts that were there, it's just, I think what we're trying to do is, uh, make the general plan whole, because we alluded to a future noise level, and we had the chart in EIR, we never put it in the general plan. So that's what they're doing, they're just kind of, that's that one chart that's in the back of the book that shows the noise level, so.
Yeah.
Right here, these charts, this, yeah, chart here.
Right, I, I don't.
There's an existing, and then what they're doing, they're adding is the future noise level, which was contained in the EIR. And now we're putting in the general plan, because there was words in the general plan that said it's going to be in there. So now we're just kind of, we're putting the chart in to make the, the words correct.
Okay.
This, no, this map was cited in the general plan.
Yeah.
But was not included.
Yeah, that's, I think I.
So we've recreated it, put it in here. So it's a clarification item.
And on the Planning Area Five, Planning Area Eight, that was just to include Planning Area Five veracity? Huh? That's a very good catch. Go over two more, to put the planning area chart, sphere of influence, I think.
This is the, the map that's already in the general plan. That's, that map's in the general plan, and then this map.
Updates it?
It updates it, there's these areas here, Planning Areas Six and Seven that.
Disappeared.
We went and looked at the ranch plan, and they're no longer.
They got merged in Planning Area Eight. Which illuminates how close Planning Area Five really is to Telega, I guess, it's a good scale.
But there's no connections.
No, because they, because of the Conservancy, right? Avenue to Telega ends there.
There's no connection to the city, the connection goes out to, to the Ortega.
Yeah.
So that actually is probably a good place for me to mention that we, we've included a number of new maps in order to clarify things. So before we had this map that showed all the focus areas in the city, but you couldn't really tell what was in the focus area. So there's maps that get into more detail and we reformat it things to just provide more information, make it a more user-friendly document. And then in addition to that, we have the, the city's first GIS-based zoning map that we're proposing for the, the planning commission to make recommendation on, eight uncertain. That was provided to you.
Two thousand and sixteen.
Yes.
Say that again?
So there, that was a substantial part of this process, is the mapping to identify these cleanup items. And are there any comments about the maps?
I think they're terrific.
Anything that should be changed or?
I just, Chris and I had quite a, a conversation, I have to remember that, that only half the city is done, because the specific plans on those charts are gray, so they haven't been, they were not a part of that. So that's phase two that comes to us soon, I guess, or a date, some date certain sometime or a future date.
Yes.
That we do the rest of the city as far as the little pocket parks and everything else.
Yes, specific plan areas.
Yeah, this map will be great too. Um, do you have terrain model inside?
Uh, no, I, I think we have topography data, um, aerial data that's, I don't know, I don't, I'm not, while I know a good amount of GIS, I don't, I don't want to use the wrong terms here, but I think it's, we have aerial, we have aerial photos that are lined up with topography so that if we needed something, is there some particular information that you want us to show?
If it's not a three-D, uh, t- terrain model, maybe at least we can bring the contour lines into it.
I have contour lines, is there an area that you want that information for?
Not the particular, but sometime, um, we, when it deals with grading issue, for example, the MU three-point-two.
Sure, we can provide something like that.
So you have the information, you have a system.
Sure, we'll, we'll provide something for that meeting, we'll have a.
Okay.
Some exhibits. A good suggestion, thank you.
You know, only other issue, of course, is there any other discussion about, uh, the zoning ordinance area down in, uh, in this phase three, they, they dealt a lot of track, and the track changes, I just noticed to Chris, that they hadn't done a lot of changes to MU five. But, uh, I guess you didn't feel, did you, did you update it?
Uh, the mixed-use five on April twenty-second, there are some comments about the uses that are mentioned there, and we're recommending that we look at some of those issues at a later date in phase two. So to give you an example, there's discussion about manufactured homes, that there's a certain requirement or allowance in mixed-use five that's not in the others and.
Trailer parts.
And so we, we're recommending that we wait on that until the next phase, because we're trying to move this overall item forward.
So that's part of the next phase, to give you a little more time, but we're recommending tonight that you fix that before we move the package forward. We, we delay this to a date certain, prove it that you'll fix MU five.
That would be a different direction than we have, right? If the commission wants us to tackle that, then we can, we're just recommending that those very detailed issues related to certain policies on the, on the uses for the zone, that we wait on that to the next part of this project, not this part of this project.
For the other commissioners, the new commissioners, the, the area I'm talking about is, uh, the tables and the most generally, one of the sections I always find very powerful is the track changes that Chris always provides. It's way in the back. And so, you know, the changes in fact will come out in red, so you can generally, generally see what staff has done. Uh, it's towards the, right in front of the, uh, the resolutions attachment, uh, ten-eleven. So for, for the new commissioners, the track changes section always illuminates what's been changed and worked pretty well. That's where I noticed that MU five was all black and hadn't been changed. And so, uh, anyway, I discuss, you, you proposed fixing that in phase two.
Yes, in phase two. I serve objections.
Okay. Is there any objections? No? Okay, so we'll, uh, entertain some sort of a straw. Open it, let's, uh, open it up to public hearing, anybody want to make comments?
His presence alone.
There's no comments, we'll, we'll close, we'll close the public hearing. Uh, any discussion at all, uh, commissioners at, uh, ten forty-five?
If there's no discussion, I will move that, uh, we take a straw vote, um, uh, informing staff that we are in agreement with them regarding the resolutions that are included in attachments fourteen and fifteen.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Straw vote passes seven-zero.
Thank you, Chris, for your diligence and patience during all of this. This has been excruciating, and thank you.
You, you didn't go in the office today, did you? You didn't have to go to work today, did you? I got to go to work today.
Thank you, Jim. Have a nice drive back.
Let's, uh.
Uh, no, thank you for all your reading, all this, it's quite a packet.
Word by word.
Four hundred pages. No, those maps are great, four hundred pages of effort here. Uh, there is no. New business, old business.
Welcome to the planning commission.
Thank you.
I just wanted, I want the new commissioners to know tonight was a relatively easy night, usually it's a little more difficult.
We're really going to start bearing down.
Yeah, you guys.
This was an easy, this was an easy.
Your learning session's over.
This was easy.
Is there anything from, uh, reports of commissioners and staff at all, uh?
Better not have any.
I'll just, I'll just say it's late, but I'll just say very quickly, if you all are the, the existing, the older commissioners, veteran commissioners, remember the Pet Boys signage that we did some months ago, we included some, uh, requirement for landscaping on the alley side.
Yes, how's that going?
And, um, yeah, I walk by there once in a while, so far so good. It's actually, it is growing, they've got, I don't know, three or four, you know, spots where the vines are coming up, and so far they seem pretty healthy, fingers crossed. So I just wanted to let you guys know that it's so far so good on that.
Anything on the future agenda there for the planner? From the city planner, anything on the, uh, future agendas at all that we need to give us a head up or just wait for the, for the book to get on our doorstep?
No, no.
Okay.
Nothing special to report.
From, uh, the coastal advisory committee, uh, there's a meeting tomorrow night and, uh, and we'll be attending, and Lawrence Hamna is going to be the guest speaker. He's, uh, the environmental engineering liaison that put together, got all the permits lined up for the sanddag sanding, beach replenishment. Uh, when they did about twelve beaches about two or three years ago with, uh, with, in the sanddag area, Encinitas, Cardiff, Salona Beach, he's going to, it's a repeat guest speaker to bring the coastal advisory commi, committee up to speed on some of the technicals of, uh, of beach sanding. And hopefully maybe we'll possibly recommend that he go talk to the city council to bring him up to speed. So that's, uh, that's all there is, and with that.
Um, I just, note, I won't be here for the first meeting in August. So that's when you can pass a MU three-point-two.
And, uh, if there's nothing else, then I will move adjourned to the adjourned regular planning commission meeting, to be held at six P M. on July twenty-second, twenty fifteen, in council chambers at City Hall, located one hundred Avenue, Pasadena, Sacramento, California.
And do I have a second?
Oh, no, let's stay for a while.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.